Good. It is 5:30. It is appointed time for the April 28, 2021, study session for the Holland City Council. We will start the meeting with public comment in just a moment, but I have a couple of comments I need to make. We are going to, we are missing Dave Hookstruth this evening. He is out of town. We are also missing Quincy Byrd this evening. I talked to Quincy prior to the meeting and he gave me permission to share. He has just had a COVID test. He's not expecting that it's going to be positive, but just to rather be safe than sorry, he decided not to attend the meeting, but he will be watching online. So Quincy, if you can see us out there, we hope you're feeling better. And Mr. Corbin, I have not heard from Mr. Corbin, but hopefully he will be here soon. This is a study session we do in all of our meetings at the City of Holland, whether it's City Council, whether it's one of our boards, committees, or commissions. Every one of our meetings is governed by the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, and each meeting has a public comment period. That means the public has the opportunity to address council in this case, or that board committee or commission, and there is a time limit for that. In our city, in our regular city council meetings, it's five minutes. In our study sessions, it's three minutes. It is one-way communication from the public to the council. This is not a time where we ask-answer questions. This is also not a time where we engage in debate, but it's a great opportunity for the public to be able to address us. And that's also a very important piece of this, is that we ask that all of your comments be addressed directly to the council and not to each other, not to other members of the, of the community. We certainly don't expect that because we've had great civil conversations and discussions around this table. Civil discourse is one of the things that we hold in very high regard among council members, with council members to the public, and we expect that from the public back to council as well. My understanding is there are folks waiting outside to make public comment. For those of you who got here early and got a nice seat inside, I am very sorry to tell you, you're going to have to wait until everyone who's outside who wants to make a comment has the opportunity to make that comment first. We do, we've done that for a couple of different reasons. One is you're sitting here warm and comfortable, and the other is with COVID, we don't want to have people coming in and swapping seats and changing out. And so that's a, that's a practice that we have put together during the age of COVID. So having said that, I did see someone in the doorway. I don't know if they're still there. With that, you may, you may come forward and address council if you would like to at this time. And what we'll ask you to do is you have, you have three minutes. We ask at the beginning that you state your name and address for the record. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. It's Linda, right? I think I recognize you behind your mask.
It is Linda behind the mask. You are right.
All right. So Linda, you probably already know this, but not everybody else knows this. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are very strict about that. So expect when the three minutes expires that the city manager will tell me that your time has expired, and I will say thank you very much, and then we'll move on to the next person. So with that, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Linda Miskovitz-Falstad. I live at 152 Birchwood in Holland, Michigan. And I first want to say thank you to all of you for being here and serving our citizens. Dear Mayor and City Council, I want to read you something from the 2017 City of Holland Master Plan, which my name happens to be on. Promote higher-density development that is well-designed and amenity-rich, along with a mix of housing unit types in redevelopment and infill development projects adjacent to and in downtown and on major thoroughfares. This is one bullet point from the 2017 City of Holland Master Plan, page 80, on housing. My name's on this document. I do not believe, when this document was created, that it was intended to change the use of over 4,000 homes in our city. This point focuses on redevelopment and infill development in downtown and major thoroughfares. Questions I have: What is defined as downtown? How many units of single-family homes can we convert before people looking to live, work, and realize dreams are pushed out of the city for starter homes? What is the current number of converted homes in the TNR district? Is there a tipping point? Do the changes in Udo reflect the 2017 Master Plan for housing? Why are the changes in TNR and R1 being proposed? The chair of the PC said in a meeting, "This is not about affordable housing." What is this about? That's my question to each one of you. Please send the Udo document back to the Planning Commission for revisions, leaving TNR and R1 neighborhoods as currently zoned. I love my neighbors and my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have copies for everyone. May I give them to?
Actually, yes, just give them to the city manager.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you very much. And I failed to mention this at the beginning. In between each speaker, our very able city manager will be sanitizing the podium, and so as soon as he's done with that, then the next speaker can come forward.
I'm going to trade seats with someone who needs to leave. I'll see you.
And please come forward. And would you please state your name and address for the record? And did you have a comment, Mr. Chitui?
Just one second. Just let the record show that Councilmember Corbin joined us at 5:33, please.
Great. Thank you very much. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Rick Van Hoeven, 114 East 26th Street. Good evening. Earlier in the week, the National Association of Realtors posted March existing home sales that fell short of expectations, yet still exhibited the highest year-over-year growth on record since 1999. Mortgage rates have increased since the beginning of the year, but constrained supply has helped to support the rising price environment. Our biggest need in the single-family home is single-family homes, and this proposed change, I believe, would only reduce the number of single-family residences available within the city. I have heard on more than one occasion that this is not about affordable housing, as the lady before me had also spoke, but rather it is about density. Shouldn't this be more about affordable housing and have more influence in this decision? Help me understand why density is good for the citizens of the City of Holland. I do not believe I have heard clearly answered that question of how the proposed zoning change will impact the property values of those affected by the change. We already have availabilities zoning for duplexes and multiple dwelling units in the city. Please clearly answer why we need more, for what purpose, and for whose benefit. I do not have those answers. As the past six-year member and co-chair of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee for the City of Holland, this proposal seems to be directly adverse to what our established goals were for building economically-stable neighborhoods and a quality of life that attracts people to live in the City of Holland. How specifically does this proposed change support that initiative? We know that the Udo did not work in the Grand Rapids and in many other areas that it was implemented in the United States. What is a city the size of Holland, why are we willing to incur the cost and the zoning initiative and change when we have a poor success and track record in cities across the nation? Jay Wortley, chief economist for State of Michigan for 37 years, does not have support in this. I would think that his 37 years of experience would be an important factor in this decision-making. Also, could you postpone the decision in order to educate more of our city residences? They are not aware, and I know you have tried to do as much as I believe you can. I don't know the answer. I am only asking, given the circumstances of the pandemic, I think there are many folks who are not aware of this change, and if they were aware of this change, they would be here tonight.
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes. Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
Please leave.
Rick, thank you very much. Your time has expired, sir. We do ask to, everyone to keep it to three minutes, so thank you very much.
That's my three minutes, and that was my final comment.
Thank you. Thank you. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Kim Vesper, 229 West 11th.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to share my heart on the part of the Udo that affects the, the ability to rent out. I know we've had an increased crime in our area on 11th Street, and my daughter's bike was just stolen on my van a couple of weeks ago. And so it, it concerns me, her safety. You know, having a daughter that's home, that, to have the increased population, the increased traffic, right now, we know who belongs where generally in our neighborhoods, and to add a bunch of that increased population really concerns me with the safety of my family. So I just wanted to share my heart.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Lisa Caston, 206 West 11th Street. This study session is your first step in understanding the Udo that is being recommended to council by the Planning Commission. I would encourage all of you to listen, do your research, find a way to represent the people of Holland who have elected you to the very positions which you now serve. Ask good questions, let the facts guide you, and not speculation or hopes of desired outcomes. The pieces in the Udo that seek to add density to the LDR and TNR neighborhoods only seek to do so through increased rentals. I have no objection to rentals. I am not fearful of rentals. They exist now, and they should remain an option in our community, but so should the option to purchase a home or rent a single-family home, and we need those homes in order to make that option possible. Housing Next website has a housing needs assessment for Ottawa County, which lists the highest need is for moderate-income, for-sale homes between $150,000 and $249,000. That's found in Section 2, Page 11. Why endorse a plan that intentionally reduces single-family homes and does not address the true listed need for our community? The 2017 City of Holland Master Plan, map 5.1, lists the core city neighborhoods as neighborhood preservation. My understanding is that this Udo should reflect the master plan. How does this version of Udo preserve the neighborhoods or the homes? There have been many articles and lots of data surrounding studies from other communities that have tried the same idea of gentle density, and it actually produced the exact opposite of intended results. Housing costs went up and priced out lower-to-middle-income working families. How do the Udo changes to increase density protect our low-to-middle-income residents and preserve a place for them in our core city neighborhoods? I am asking that you please send this back to the Planning Commission and ask them to take out the changes to the TNR and LDR that allow for increased density through conversions, and then they can present it to you separately. I hope that you can make a decision that plans for a Holland that preserves real housing options, that reflect the needs of our diverse neighborhoods that make up this community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'd have copies if you, okay, I didn't. Thank you very much.
No problem.
And you may come forward while he's cleaning. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
I'd be happy to. My name is Stacy Carpen. I live at 221 West 11th Street, and my concern is, like many of us here and around our city, we go to work regularly, daily, hour after hour, and we strive for peaceful, enjoyment, quiet neighborhoods, right? We want to work hard during the morning, afternoon, and night. Then we go and work on our homes, and then we go to bed. I live in a neighborhood where there is one rental that stands out bright in our, in our neighborhood that still has Christmas decorations, Halloween decorations, Easter decorations. Every season, it's whatever holiday you want to see. I don't really want to see that happening in the houses right alongside me because it's a house that's not far from me. And I don't think that you would either. I think if you look at the property values, you look at the time that you spent, why should you have to suffer because the city wants people to be forced to have neighbors that they're not choosing that they want? Like, I feel like if you would like to give us a fair shot, you should give the people that live in specific neighborhood zones the right to vote if they want their neighborhood in a zone that would be conducive with your plan. You know, let each of those neighborhoods, like the historic district, choose. Do we want to be part of Udo? I mean, that's our right. We, we, we came to you. We voted for you people and others to represent the people, to hear our voice, and I think call after call, meeting after meeting, you've heard our voice. You know the right thing to do. Some of you don't live in our neighborhoods. You live outside, and you're making very impactful decisions of people's lives. I hate to see people that do work hard finally get to the point where they wipe their hands and say, "Have it all, city," and now those homes will lose property values, and the people that stayed here to work this community, to build it what it is today, to get you to this point, will leave this community and not return. Then what will you have? You will not have people's hard-earned money going back into their properties, which will increase taxes through single-family homeownership versus having you converse these homes that were primary residences receiving homestead taxes that will now be doubled for their non-homestead taxes for the.
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes. Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Is that everyone from outside? All right.
I believe so.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Van Deikin. Thank you again, Mr. Van Beek. Anyone who is here in council chambers who would like to address council at this time, please come forward to the microphone. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jay Wortley. I live at 311 West 12th Street. I'm a retired state government economist, including senior economist for the Michigan Senate for 18 years, and then chief economist under two governors, one a Democrat and one a Republican. And one of my key responsibilities during these many years was to provide unbiased analyses of proposed policy changes to identify and quantify their potential impacts, and so my bosses could make informed decisions. Over the years, I have seen some very well-intentioned proposed law changes that had some very undesirable and unexpected consequences that the person or body making the proposal was totally unaware of, consequences that were only revealed through unbiased detailed analyses. As I have studied the proposed density-increasing zoning changes that are included in the Udo, several questions come to mind that I, and you may also, think are important to answer in order to better understand the impact these proposed changes will likely have. As city council members, do you know, over the next five years, would the city's property tax base be positively or negatively affected by the proposed zoning changes, and by how much? Who are the winners under this proposal? Why are they winners? What data was used to conduct this analysis? How would single-family houses adjacent to or nearby new conversions be affected? Have you seen the analyses and the data used that shows it is in Holland's long-term best interest to convert single-family homes to multifamily housing units? And what have been the recent experiences and actions taken by nearby cities regarding the converting of single-family houses to multifamily housing units? Were these experiences factored into the proposed zoning changes here in Holland? I think these are important questions, and I appreciate you giving me the time to share them with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do have somebody from outside who is here to address council, so I'm going to just ask the folks that are here in chambers just to wait a few minutes more, and as soon as Mr. Van Beek is completed cleaning the podium, you can come right forward, yep, and just wait for him to finish, and then would you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Burns. My address is 457 Bracato Court in Holland, and I am asking, through experiences that I've had, we moved here three years ago from San Jose, California, because they had turned San Jose into a sanctuary city. And because of that change, I had, I had never seen an area, a city changed so drastically as I did that happening. It brought in a lot of people who were begging on corners. It brought in a lot of crime. The police were, were just stressed to the max. The thing that, that triggered me wanting to move is I went to an Ace Hardware store just to get a card, and the clerk that was there was on the phone, and he said, "I have to take this call," and when he hung up, he said, "We just had a crime spree. This is the second time that this group has hit this store." They pulled out in front, and they come in, and because the police will not go to any place that's been taken less than $1,000, the police can't respond to that because it's not a big enough crime. And it was the second time in a row that this group had done that, where they'd gone inside and just taken things and then run out of the store. And we also, we had people in our neighborhood who, our neighbors had, we had, we lived in a nice neighborhood, and the people next door had a little fence in front of their house, and they had a couch on their front porch, and they got up one morning to get the newspaper, and there's a homeless person sleeping on the couch on their front porch. And this is the kind of thing that happens when you implement these kind of changes. And I just feel like for the city to take all of the R1 housing and convert that unilaterally, I think that that is a mistake. I think that people can still go to the, the building ordinance people, the people who give permits, and that they can get individual permission. I don't think that you should change all of the houses. It shouldn't be all-encompassing like you have it now. I just feel like it's really going to affect the, the culture of the city and, and the way that this city is so beautiful and the reason why we moved here. That's all.
Thank you. And I believe that was the last person for this round, anyway, of people outside who may want to speak to council. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
I am Dale Hoskins. I live just down the street at 262 West 12th. Greetings to councilmen and councilwomen, and thank you for your service to our community and your commitment to understanding this proposed ordinance and its implications for your ward and for the entire city. I spent many hours studying the Udo in its various iterations over the past four months and listened to most public comments and followed the letters in the Sentinel and posts on Nextdoor. Despite all this research, it's difficult for me to understand the impact of this ordinance the way I believe that you can. Why? You have a huge advantage over me. Rather than hearing scores of unilateral public comments and reading unilateral letters, you can dialogue with the Planning Commission, and you can ask them questions, and you can expect answers. The issue for you to decide is not whether the city needs this ordinance, needs a unified development ordinance. The answer is yes. It's not whether it's nicely organized and it'll help the city and its developers. The answer is yes. The issue is for you to understand what to do with the enhanced densification features. I'm going to give you a list of questions that I think might help you and guide you. I also would like to suggest that you find a couple of volunteers in each of your wards to help you with this research. One, what opportunity does the current ordinance permit to increase housing supply? For example, I know that virtually everyone in my very dense neighborhood could add a detached ADU. What additional opportunities would the present Udo's enhanced densification offers, offer? How would these enhanced densification features adversely or positively impact your neighborhood? What would your constituents think of people, if people took advantage of these features? Why is it important to push for these features at this time? Why are developers suddenly seeking to purchase homes in our neighborhood? The Udo makes many claims, such as complete neighborhoods where residents can live, work, and play, less vehicle miles, decreased traffic, lower greenhouse gases, decreased crime, preserved property values, decreased need for payment. How will these claims apply to the conventional neighborhoods? I understand that they won't. They only apply to the mixed-use zones and the Form-based code areas. Please study Article 6, landscaping and green infrastructure, and find out all the wonderful low-impact development standards. They too only apply to these other zones. They don't apply to the standard neighborhoods. Instead, what the Udo will, will permit is that developers can replace our trees and landscaping with brick, concrete, and asphalt, which will exacerbate the Herbert, the heat island. Okay. It won't help with walkable neighborhoods. I only have a few seconds, but I'd like to conclude and say, when I listen to the mayor talk about this, I keep thinking of the Simon and Garfunkel song, "Cecilia, you're breaking my heart, you're shaking my confidence daily. My beloved city, you're breaking my heart. I'm down on my knees begging you, please restore my confidence in this city."
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Matt, do you have someone out there? No? All right. Is there anyone else in council chambers who would like to address council at this time? And that's a great reminder, make sure that your cellphones are silenced. Thank you for reminding us of that, Mr. Corbin. We appreciate it. Yes, it was a, it was a very, very nice of you to provide that public service message to all of us. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Don Swerengia. I live at 450 Bracato Court. My wife and I left Holland in the early '70s to do 35 years of military service. We've lived in multiple places around the country and overseas. When we came back in 2007, it was a no-brainer for us, we're to move. We wanted to come back home. Last week, we had the opportunity to go to Virginia Beach, Virginia. We had a chance to visit four places that we lived in, brand-new apartment complex, government housing, the first house we bought, which was a townhouse, the second house, which was a much larger townhouse, single-family home. In the '70s, Virginia Beach was proud of the fact that there was the third-fastest-growing city in the country. We thought, cool, we're the third-fastest-growing in the country. We thought that was wonderful. So did the city planners. When we went back last week, we were horrified to see the consequence of that density. I assure you that not one of you here, nor myself, nor my kids or grandkids, would want to move in any of those houses that we lived in, or the neighborhoods. The densification of it wreaked havoc on every single place. The feature that bothers me most about the proposals is the densification factor. ADUs in my mind have a good place on very large properties with plenty of room. Frankly, I'd love to go to Florida and find an ADU to live in somewhere and not live with a cast 1,000-some condo somewhere. However, I think the consequences of densification will be most felt over time and very negatively on Holland. The people that have spoke to you so far, I was extremely impressed with how articulate they were. I urge you to consider the various recommendations they made because they're right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? We'll take this gentleman, and then, sir in the corner, we'll take you next. Great. Thank you. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening. My name is Jerry Comien, and I live at 184 West 37th Street. While there are many good aspects about Udo plan, I feel the residential zoning change from R1 to LDR is not one of these. One factor for my wife and me in purchasing our home was a neighborhood of single-family homes, and I have yet to see a good explanation of how this change will benefit our or other neighborhoods of single-family homes. I attended several of the Zoom Planning Committee meetings and saw that the vast majority of residents who spoke at the meetings opposed this change. I ask that each of you reach out to your constituents you represent, get their input, follow their direction. We, as taxpaying residents, should. We as taxpaying residents should have a direct voice in such a critical change. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Anthony Smith, 1004 Colonial Court. I always tell people, I was born and raised in Detroit, but I pretty much grew up in Holland. I've been here since I was 19-years-old, I'm 64-years-old now. My wife and I purchased our home in 1999, we've been there about 22-years now. And one of the main reasons we live where we, that was our dream home, where we live now, is to one of the most desired areas I think there is in Holland to live. Everything is within walking distance, whatever you need. In 2009, we had quite a bit of water in Holland, if you've been here for a while, you know about the big flood that we had. We got over six feet of water in our basement. Insurance company didn't come through for us, but our neighbors did. Our neighbors is probably one of the most reason, best reason that we stayed there. We get along, we love each other, and we all take care of our homes. We just feel that if you would just reconsider this U2T zoning thing, the biggest thing, I think, is just the way we get along with each other and our neighbors, that's all going to be lost. And I, we just real feel real passionate about that. To, I appreciate if you would reconsider your judgment on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll do the gentleman in green and then the woman in red, or you can, if, either one, all right.
She's my wife, so she's welcome to come.
Ah, all right. We do ask that you keep both your mouth and your nose covered, thank you. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Jim and Linda Skipper, from 901 Chelsea Court. Thank you for letting us speak for just a moment. When the people look for a city to move to as they ride around Holland, they must be impressed by the way the neighborhoods appear, they're so inviting. Why do you suppose this is? Probably, it's their first impression. Then digging deeper, they would find that homeowners take pride in their homes and their yards and their neighborhoods. Homeownership is a beautiful motivation to care for. This care brings to Holland a reputation for our city when we show ourselves to visitors. Since we still celebrate Tulip Time, we feel we need to keep our city cleaned, organized, and welcoming in order to encourage people to continue coming to Holland and enjoy our festival and our city. Our reputation is dependent upon it. The festival is a moneymaker for Holland and a way to show Holland off to people. The older homes being bought and renovated in our inner city by single-family ownerships are a very positive step to keeping the residential areas in good repair. Having said this, we would like you to take the residential zoning changes to R1 and TNR off of the UDO plan. Please keep the residential wording as it is currently, and consider this issue separately. This is not an affordable housing issue, that should be a totally separate issue in itself.
And I'll make way for my wife a minute, she'll finish this for us.
Great, thank you.
The current proposed changes, as we read them, as we read them, would increase density, eliminate single-family homes, permit homes to become rentals, invite more parking issues, and shrink distance between buildings and property lines. In order to emphasize the look of this kind of change, I invite you to look with me at this picture. Oops, you have it upside down. Let me show everybody here. Here we see a single-family home, a single-family home being converted to a rental by either building onto the existing home or by dividing the inside. In this case, it would be the left and the right. The reason that I have broken lines here is because I realized that if this happens in our city, you would still have the single door on the outside, but you could divide it from the inside. That is how I would explain that. If houses become divided rentals, this will create parking issues, as you see here. I have read that there would be an issue with all of these cars, and that we could put parking into the back yards, which will eliminate backyards. They will become parking areas or crowded driveways. Each rental unit also invites three more bins. One for garbage, one for yard waste, and one extra-large one for recycling. That would mean, in an area like this where you have two homes, you have three different families, and you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 bins. Where are they going to go? Sometimes, as we have been riding around the city, we have seen pictures like this. We don't need that in our Holland. So please help us keep Holland a city that takes pride in single-family home and property ownership. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, please come forward.
And mayor, and for the public, just so you know, as some are dropping these off, I'll just make one copy, I'll give them to the clerk, we'll make one copy, and then that'll be part of your e-packet in the future rather than passing out, because some of them have multiple, some of them don't.
Thank you, yeah.
So just know that that'll be part of your e-packet.
Okay, thank you, yes, just as a little bit more clarification for folks at home, council does receive emails from the public at publiccomment@cityofholland.com, and those are accepted at our regular meetings, they're not read into the record, but we do, council members do read those, and those are part of that, and what Mr. Van Beek is saying, it's, those will become, these will become part of that as well. And so would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Stacy Hurd, I live at 230 West 11th Street. I may not be an expert in housing, zoning, or economics, but I am a mother of four, and I liken your role on city council to be similar to that of a parent to the city of Holland. A parent of a large family constantly weighs and strives to do what is best for each individual member, but also what's best for the family as a whole. This takes a lot of wisdom and discernment, and sometimes it means making decisions that sacrifice the wants of some to meet the needs for the whole unit. Parents are constantly bombarded by outside influences that tell them what is best for their family, but ultimately have to make the best decisions for themselves. I encourage you to carefully analyze the data for yourselves, and not just take the experts at their word to make the best decision for our city. What do the residents of Holland need? The experts say we need to increase housing options at every price point. However, the only option being presented is increasing rentals through home conversions. Is there data to support the desire and need for more market-rate one-to-two-bedroom rentals? Or is there a greater need to maintain single-family homes for both rentals and ownership, which will serve the residents of Holland better long-term? According to the experts, the homes priced under $180,000 are the ones that would be financially feasible to convert. Considering that the average price to buy a home has grown to $230,000, does this data make sense? In looking at the limited supply of available houses for sale, what types of homes are priced under 180? These are typically homes that are under 1,200 square feet, so too small to convert, and on small lots, so ineligible to convert. The homes that are eligible to convert are going to be priced way above that 180 threshold. So who is going to have the money to purchase and convert a home at that price point? What type of landlord will be renting those properties, and at what price point? What kind of people will be able to afford those units? Are those the type of people with the greatest need? The fact is that has been verified by both the paid experts as well as many realtors is that people want single-family homes, and there is a shortage of single-family homes on the market. What will happen therefore if the inventory of single-family homes is reduced by way of conversions? Same demand, reduced supply equals increased cost. Families and multi-generational households need single-family homes, both to rent and to purchase. Reducing the supply of these will make it unaffordable, and will drive this demographic from Holland. Is that what Holland needs?
Thank you. And we do have someone waiting outside, well, have you come forward? Just wait a moment for city manager to clean the podium. And then if you would state your name and address for the record.
Can I take my mask off?
We'd rather you kept it on, thank you.
Good enough. Dan Ackerman, 22 Bellwood Drive. My reality tonight is I just have a couple of questions for you, and I think you need to answer them before you vote. I have asked repeatedly for physical pictures of neighborhoods that you want to become. I have driven around and taken physical pictures of homes with driveways where side yards are paved and backyards are paved. I have driven around neighborhoods and taken pictures of homes that supposedly had one parking space where there were cars on the lawn, where there were multiple cars on the street because they didn't fit in the driveway. I live near 48th and Central. Have you ever driven down 48th by the old Maplewood JC plant? You know where they park? They park on the driveway between the street and the sidewalk, because that's low density. They don't have any place to go with their cars. So it's not on the property, the driveway's too short, so where do they use? They use the driveway between the street and the driveway. That's when they're avoiding the trashcans that are rolling around, because now there's eight trashcans, because we've added another garbage disposal. So here's my question, right? Are you willing to take physical pictures? Are you guys willing to show me a neighborhood that has this zoning and these things, and show it to me 10-years ago, and show it to me 10-years now, and say, "This is the picture, Holland, we want, we'll show you a physical picture." Show me. Have your staff go and find pictures of neighborhoods they want this to become, because here's the issue, we're all reading the same mission statement, and we have very different pictures of the reality. So will you go take physical pictures? I've been asking the other group to take physical pictures. They have not once taken physical pictures of what they want things to become. So let's stop talking in generalities. Let's stop talking about mission statements that give us all different pie-in-the-sky pictures. How about we talk about what things really are going to look like if this is what we do? So I'm speaking against the zoning, because I think it's ridiculous to add more parking and people and paved backyards. We're all trying to live in an ecosystem. And we're all trying to live in a place where trees are good and green space is good, and what are you guys voting for? Let's pave everything we can. Come on. So get the pictures out, real pictures, not generalities. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Oh, I see you back there, yes, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Krista Tolst, I live at 1178 Alden Court. Hold on a second here, my thing just went off. 16-years ago, we bought our very first home here in Holland. There were so many houses on the market at the time. Right now, there is a severe shortage of entry-level-priced homes. Passing this UDO proposal will have a devastating impact on the ability for families to purchase an affordable home. The monthly rental rates are more expensive than what we pay each month for our mortgage. It takes away the opportunity for these families to have deep roots in our Holland community, like our family has. And it also prevents, I'm sorry, it also will not allow for the homeowners here, who are neighbors, are business owners, and the more that the more that we know our neighbors, the more that we want to support our local community and all these small businesses. There's a need for affordable rentals, but this proposal does not address this issue. We call on our elected leaders to represent those who elected them by voting "no" on UDO. With overwhelming opposition to the proposal, your duty to represent your constituents calls for you to vote "no." To do otherwise would exemplify self-interest and interest of those who are not constituents, and this has no place in our government. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. And again, would you please state your name and address for the record?
I will. Thank you, mayor, thank you, city council, I'm Mike Short. I live at 810 Myrtle, here in Holland. I have questions in relationship to the support that has been, I guess, presented to both in all of the packets that are provided, the agenda packets, your agenda packet tonight. So I'm going to ask you a few questions, and hope that you will take a look at those after this meeting. First of all, how can a plan that could result in the conversions of 19% of all homes in the TNR as well as conversion of as many as 70% of all homes in the LDR be consistent with the goals outlined in the master plan? Question number two for you. Since October 2020, when upzoning was first presented to the community, why has the UDO public comment found in Appendix G, again in your agenda packet tonight? Why is that UDO public comment so greatly opposed to UDO approval in its present form? Question number three. How can the citizen survey completed in the summer of 2019 be used to support the UDO when it was completed prior to the significant changes in the TNR and LDR residential areas that were conceived in the summer of 2020, a year later, okay? How can the biennial survey commissioned by the city and carried out by the Frost Research Center be used to support the UDO or the master plan when it does not even mention the words "UDO" or "master plan"? In a recent Sentinel opinion entitled "UDO by the Numbers", why are the possible number of conversions in the TNR zone minimized when all 462 eligible properties in the TNR can be converted if the UDO is approved? All 100% of the 462 eligible properties in TNR can be converted. Let's not work on proportions. Thank you for the chance to make these comments.
Thank you. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
You bet. Dave Skaidemah, 880 Pioneer, Ward 4. Couple of things, you've probably heard this before, but I'm going to give you the short version. Hopefully, I've written to all of you as well as the planning commission. My first house, 906 Vassar Avenue, was zoned R1 when I bought it, the realtor told us. R2 had been tried and turned down, and I thought, "Great, we're golden." Three houses, two churches on Vassar and Royce Avenue off from 40th. And within a year, the vote went through. Young person, didn't really watch, didn't think much about it. All of a sudden, first duplex was right next door on the south side of me. The second duplex was right next door to me on the north side, a couple of them on Royce, and then there was one to the east of us across the street. Five-years later, when we tried to sell that house, extremely difficult. I mean extremely difficult. We were lucky to get rid of it. And I don't have a crystal ball. If I did, especially back then, I wouldn't have bought the house. But unfortunately, we did. And I can't say that this is all of a sudden going to happen, and there's going to be a bunch of multifamilies in my neighborhood or on both sides of my house, but you guys don't have a crystal ball either. You can't tell me it's not going to happen. You can't tell me it's not going to happen. So at this point, changing the R1, when we bought, we made sure we were in an R1 district, I am totally, totally, totally against that change. So what I'm going to do is, I wrote this, and after I wrote it, I thought, I can't hold that up by the street. Nobody riding by is going to be able to read all that. So then I changed to that one. But anyway, City Council, please take residential zoning changes to R1 and TNR out of the UDO plan. If you don't want to change the plan, which I get you might do, then let the residents vote. If you don't want to make that decision, then put it to a vote and let us make the decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? One last call. Anyone who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item, review of the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Van Beek.
If you, oh yeah, we don't receive and file. I was just going to say you should receive and file, but my mistake.
No, that's all right. We'll do that at the next regular meeting.
So you, council, mayor, thank you. You've all heard me recently in some of our budget review sessions talk for a long time. So I'm going to get out of the way right away. And we have three staff members and a planning commission chair, but primarily two members that are going to do a presentation to you this evening, Chris Corey and Jenna Elswick. And I'm going to hand it over to them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Keith. We're actually going to get things started with our Chair of Planning Commission, if she wouldn't mind coming up. She has a short presentation for you. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Brooke. I did not even realize you were here. Welcome.
I was hiding in the darkness over there in the corner. Hi, everyone. I am Brooke Anderson. I live at 97 West 14th Street, and I am in the Historic District. I am currently the Chair of the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission has worked for a long time on the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance that is before you. We have collaborated on this document with many neighborhoods, groups, and individuals to get it where it is today. You might be wondering who currently is serving on the Planning Commission. We are made up of the young and the wise, the business professionals, retired professionals, and the stay-at-home parent. All of us are your neighbors, living in the Historic District, the Holland Heights neighborhood, the Elmdale-Londale neighborhood, and the downtown area. We have enjoyed getting to know each other through this process, as we had extra meetings, and getting to know the public. The UDO, once drafted and presented by the Planning Commission, received more public interest than anything else we've ever worked on. In spite of the pandemic, we received much public comment via letters, calls, Zoom meeting, public comments, and emails. The public input was and is important to us, and the Planning Commission made changes and adjustments to the UDO, and compromises were made based on the communication we received from the public. This was a collaborative effort that included many individuals, groups, and neighborhoods. The Planning Commission acknowledges that not everyone will be perfectly satisfied with this document the way it is, but we have to focus on the goals of the document: to move Holland forward while planning for the future, to align the master plan of the City of Holland with a zoning ordinance, and to update and streamline the very outdated current zoning ordinance. Thank you for taking the time, council, to read through this document. It's long, it's comprehensive, and has a lot of detail, but as you read through it, I encourage you to keep the big picture in mind as well as the goals.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brooke, and thank you to the entire Planning Commission.
I'm just going to do this just in case. And you are welcome to stay seated if you want to make the presentation.
It's okay.
You want to stand?
I would like to stand. Thanks.
So thank you, Brooke, and also thank you to the entire Planning Commission for all of your very hard work in this endeavor in developing the Unified Development Ordinance, which is really setting the City of Holland as a leader within the national planning community. And good evening, council members and mayor. We have a presentation, an overview presentation for you this evening, which I'll kick off and turn over to our consultant, Chris Corey, in a couple of minutes. So the Unified Development Ordinance. As a reminder, UDO stands for Unified Development Ordinance. And therefore, oh, sorry. And thus, the intent of this is to combine many different ordinances into one complete document. So existing code of ordinances that are now proposed to be combined into the Unified Development Ordinance as written now are the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the trees and shrubs ordinance, and then the majority of the streets and sidewalks ordinance as well. And then, UDO's intent is then also to reference other development-related ordinances and documents in order, again, for everything to be in one place. And so we reference Chapter 14, the Housing Ordinance as it currently stands today, Chapter 26, Public Lodging Ordinance, the International Fire Code. We've worked with the fire department on this, as well as it references the Holland Board of Public Works Terms and Services. So BPW is very much included in the development process of the UDO. So why do UDO? We've said it before, we'll say it a couple more times, but the purpose of UDO really is to implement the City of Holland's master plan and all of its varying goals. There are many different goals to this plan, to the master plan, and it's difficult. It's difficult to balance all of those different goals because sometimes they can seem to clash to an extent. So it has been the Planning Commission's very difficult job, as it will be yours as well, to weigh all of those different goals and come up with a comprehensive document based on that. So again, to meet the master plan, to update the antiquated 1940s platform, and in many cases, the requirements that, you know, there's some requirements that are existing standards or code of ordinances that are from the 1950s even, and to clarify language and add graphics and tables to make things more user-friendly, and then also to add best planning practice standards. For instance, low-impact development. Which is, low-impact development is one of the action steps set out in the master plan. And this table, in its full extent, is available for you in your packet for this evening, Appendix A, and it makes that link between 54 of the 99 master plan action steps. Interestingly, 99. Action steps that were laid out in the master plan, 54 of them are being implemented as proposed in the draft UDO. Municipalities are required by state legislation to review their master plans every five years and then to update them if necessary, and then to align their ordinances with them because that's the actual teeth, the implementation power for those plans. Which the City of Holland has done over the last many, many years. And we do that, though, we have been doing that through amendments. But only until three years ago, when the UDO was, the process began, have the city taken on the endeavor of completely updating the zoning ordinance to make sure that it's aligned with the master plans. But with adoption of the master plan in 2017, which was a progressive document based on resiliency for Holland in all of the different elements of the city, including transportation, environment, economic, urban design, education, et cetera, the need to update UDO was, became really a priority for both the Planning Commission as well as for community and neighborhood services staff. So it was budgeted for fiscal years 18 and 19. And as we started researching about different options for that zoning rewrite, we came across this newer method, the Unified Development Ordinance, and really, you know, glommed onto it because it's such a great way to bring everything together that's helpful to everybody using the document in all of the different ways that it's used. And so then CNS started, CNS staff started meeting with other department staff, which, as I mentioned, were very critical in this entire process, other staff members, and also the boards and commissions of the city. And then the RFP, the Request for Proposals for our consultant, was released in April of 2018. And of the five middles, we ended up, Planning Commission ended up choosing McKenna Associates. And then Chris Corey and I, who's the West Michigan Director for McKenna Associates, we started meeting at least monthly to really go through all of the different ordinances and then to determine what recommendations for changes that we'd want to bring to Planning Commission. And those changes were then written up into draft policy reports, which we brought to Planning Commission. They deliberated and then gave us direction, in which point we started writing the ordinance language, brought it back to Planning Commission several times, and then the edits began, many, many edits. So this then produced a document that, oh, sorry, I need to go one more. That ended up producing a document that is before you today that the Planning Commission is recommending for adoption. It's 332 pages, 14 articles, 148 sections. In each of those 148 sections, there's at least one standard or requirement, though generally, there's more. Also included in the UDO is a zoning map rewrite of our existing zoning map, as well as form-based codes, sub-district zoning maps as well. So a little bit on the zoning. Let me get my slide out. So largely, our proposed zoning map is very similar to our existing zoning map. There's just some key differences. First of all, zone district name changes. So for instance, R1 Zone District is being proposed to be renamed to the LDR, Low Density Residential Zone District, in order to better describe the intent. The C2 Highway Commercial Zone District is being recommended to be changed to CMU, Corridor Mixed Use, because there's being an emphasis on the mixed use in the corridors rather than just the commercial element. So all of the existing zoning ordinances that are being, or I'm sorry, zone districts that are being proposed to remain, except for the Education District, that's proposed to stay the same, the Planning Commission proposes to rename them the zone districts themselves. So that's not to say that it's being rezoned. The name is being proposed to be changed. So that's number one. Also, color differentiation. So you can see in these two maps, as you compare them closer, in our existing map, we have different shades of yellow. So it's often confusing as to exactly what zone district it is. So that's a key difference, that we're being very intentional to make sure that those colors really pop out, that it's understandable that there's a LDR, Low Density Residential Zone District, next to a Medium Density Residential District, which is our existing R2 Zone District. And then even R3, our existing R3 Zone District, is another shade of yellow currently, and to call that out as well in an orange color. So once you start looking at the, comparing them, you can see that difference as well. The other key difference is our form-based code, which I'll speak to in a little bit more detail in a moment. But the form-based code, if you start from the north of the city, you can see that teal, bright teal color. So that is being proposed in basically downtown, north downtown, east downtown, and then down in the Centennial area, near here, near Centennial Park, down river, and then down Michigan Avenue, also Washington Square, what we call Old Washington, which is down between like 28th and 31st Street on Washington, and then South Shore Village out in the west. Also, a key difference is that currently, you can notice in our existing map, there's two different colors of purple. One is for PUD Zone District, which is Planned Unit Development. One's the Planned Residential Development Zone District. The UDO is proposing to merge those two into Planned Unit Development. And some standard changes are proposed for those as well. There are some added high-density residential areas, specifically like around 16th Street. Currently, as I had just mentioned, there's quite a bit of R3, which is our high-density existing zone district, right there on 16th Street. With getting rid of the agriculture zone district, several of those properties are being proposed to be rezoned, adjacent properties throughout the area. And then merging of the two industrial zone districts. So on our existing map, you can see two shades of gray. This proposed map is, just has one shade, which is the merging of the industrial zone districts and the standards that go along with them. So I mentioned some new zone districts, some other new zone districts is, that are being proposed, is the Cottage Neighborhood Residential Zone District, or CNR, which is out in the Central Park area. The redevelopment mixed-use RMU Zone District on Ottawa and Lincoln down into Century Lane area. Greenfield mixed-use is in the Waverly Subarea, like Waverly between 24th and 16th area. And then the Airport Zone District for all properties that are owned by the airport down there where the airport is. And then an open-space zone district, which is for all of the city parks and cemeteries. Also proposing three overlay zone districts, which I'll speak to in one moment. I do have that full table here that discusses all of the different zone name changes, also highlights out again which zone districts are proposed to be deleted from the book, and then those zone districts that are proposed to be new, which we're happy to go through in more detail after the presentation. happy to go through in more detail after the presentation. So with all of these new zone districts, and then some of them, like I said, taking, being taken away, actual rezonings from one zone district and its full set of standards to another zone district and its full of, full set of standards was necessary. So 174 residential properties with one to four units are being proposed to be rezoned. Largely, there's 83 properties in the Central Park neighborhood, so much of that is, is due to the incorporation of this, the Cottage Neighborhood Residential Zone District, also the Form-Based Code areas, and, and the doing away with the agricultural zone. A lot of our residential was, was in the agricultural zone, so making that the low-density residential. 778 non-residential properties and residential properties with five or more units are being proposed to be rezoned, that's largely because of the Form-Based Code, and, and then some of those HDR, those High Density Residential Areas that I discussed before. The Airport Overlay Districts, which are, two of them are new, one of them is revised from, from what we currently have. One is the Airport Overlay District, which is comprised of six different areas, which you can see, see in this map, right around the airport there. And that, that reflects the, the, what's it called, the, the Airport Flight Pattern Approach, Approach, thank you, Approach Plan. And so it's subdivided into six different areas, and within those six areas, those properties would, as proposed, be required to meet the zoning, the underlying zoning, zone district standards, as well as those overlay standards for that area. So, so largely, you can see that that's in the industrial zone district, and then those areas identify the different uses that are allowed or not allowed. And this is, we worked hand-in-hand with the airport consultant, Mead Hunt, as well as airport staff, and have brought this through to the West Michigan Airport Authority Board, and all were, were approved as it's proposed. And then, including this table, is, is also a features table, so things like detention basins, where they're permitted within the, the Flight Approach Plan as well. The Hope Neighborhood Overlay District, that's existing today, a reminder, in this neighborhood, in this Hope, in this overlays district, I'm sorry, single-family, it only permits single-family homes, and no ADUs, accessory dwelling units, or, or borders are permitted within this area. The only revision that is being proposed is to just move that southern boundary line north from 16th up to 17th Street. And then the Waterfront Overlay District, which would, the boundary of that is from Cleveland as extended to the lake, and then all the way down to Lincoln Avenue as extended to the river. So all that area that's, that's dotted there. However, any property that's zoned industrial would be exempt from this overlay. So this is for any new development, new future development. And what it entails is, the intent really is to have public views of the water areas from, in, in this area, I'm sorry. So what it's proposing is that either the new development would build a, or construct a, a pathway, or some type of a boardwalk along the water, and that would be provided to the city as a public access easement, or that they would be required to have different zone standard, zoning standards, that was, that would further restrict their, their, their site layout. So for instance, if they do not provide a pathway, they would be then required to provide a view shed. The view shed would be a minimum of 60 feet between buildings, or at least between two buildings on a property, so that at least there would be a view of the water from a major street, so from Pine Street, Pine Avenue, for instance. And then, and then also, if they were not going to provide the public access easement, then there would be a limit on the height of structures, such as a fence, so that that view would be maintained, as well as the height of, 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 of the buildings, so that there, that would preserve views from adjacent buildings that were higher in height in the, in the near area. So again, the intent is to provide views, the hope is for it to be along the water, though, and, and this overlay is, is trying to incentivize that, which was a change in direction from what Planning Commission originally was proposing, which was a requirement for it, after speaking with the attorney and hearing public comment. So the Form-Based Code, this is brand-new to the City of Holland, it's one of the items that was mentioned quite frequently in the master plan, 2017 master plan, there's an entire section devoted to it in the urban design. The Form-Based Code is broken up into nine different sub-districts. Going to go back to this map real quickly, if you see, again, that teal color, that in the general zone district map points out that it's a Form-Based Code. There's the second layer that then divides the map up into those nine different sub-districts. And each of those sub-districts were really chosen very methodically, very diligently, in order to either preserve the current character of those areas, or to enhance a character of different areas. In order to do that, in order to develop that character, best planning approaches are to be very intentional about the interaction between the public realm and the private realm. And so we're doing that through the requirement of different building types, frontage types, and building frontage types, and then the building envelope, which is, which are your dimensional standards, like your setbacks and your height. This is our height map, which the Planning Commission spent a lot of time working through. You'll notice that it's not consistent with the sub-district map, and the reason for that is because Planning Commission was very intentional to look at those gateway areas, is really being more appropriate in character for something, for buildings that were more at, at the six-story level. As just a side note, just to remind you, anything above four stories in the Form-Based Code would require a stepback of 15 feet, and that also is to enhance the character of these different areas. Planning Commission did deliberate quite a lot on this, and ultimately did propose an area that you'll see there in the north, between Pine and River, and Second and Fourth Streets, that is being proposed for 12 stories. The reason is, is, is it's, well, first of all, the rationale would be to add for, add more housing, which Chris will speak to in, in a moment. That location in particular, because of the elevation, as well as the proximity to our new BPW water, or digester. You can also notice that there's a step down to nine stories, just there, to the southeast of that area, and then the, and then predominantly six stories, and then, like I just discussed, the waterfront downtown sub-district would be determined by that, that overlay district. And then we have those two to four stories, really throughout the rest of the Form-Based Code. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Chris Corey, our consultant for McKenna, and he'll walk through just a couple of slides about the different, the different standards that comprise the Unified Development Ordinance, and get into a little bit more of the process. Thank you very much.
Chris, before you get started, I just want to check with counsel, see if anybody's interested in having a short break. Been at it for an hour and a half, yes, so let's.
I do have one question before we do that.
Okay.
If, if you don't mind, Jenna. There was just one piece of information, I think you may have set it backwards, I just want to clarify it.
Sure.
Specifically in the Hope District. Are we reducing it from 17th to 16th, or are we expanding it from 16th to 17th?
Reducing it from 16th to 17th.
From 17th to 16th.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, let's, let's take a break until seven o'clock. Yeah, let's take a break until seven o'clock.
It has legal provisions in it, which all sort of beginning chapters of zoning ordinances have, but what is important about Article one is it has what we're calling the toolbox. That was Jenna's name, I think, toolbox. And what that does is it lays out the basic things that a person using the zoning ordinance needs to know. It's got the flow chart you could see on the screen that describes different processes, but it also has things like, how do I figure out which is my front lot line? What does setback mean? How do I measure a setback? How do I measure a building height? How do I know if my lot's big enough? How do I know what zone district I'm in? All that stuff, right in Chapter one. Chapter two goes into detail on each individual zone district. It begins with a couple of summary charts that say, first, what uses are allowed in each district, and then the dimensional standards of each district. Then it goes into detail of that district by district. It also includes parking standards. Now, that's an innovative organizational thing. It used to be your parking requirements were a separate chapter. And what ended up happening is, over time, the list of uses that are allowed in a district and the list of uses on the parking list didn't match up with each other. By putting them together, we ensure they match up, and it's very clear what parking requirement goes with what use. Article three is the Form Based Code. Jenna got into a lot of the details there. It's organized kind of in three parts, you know, building types, which is what can go on in a building, a frontage type, which is how the building interacts with the public realm, the road in front of it, and the building envelope, which is the dimensional standards, the sandbox that a developer gets to play in, in terms of building a building. Article four goes into detail on individual land uses, particularly those that need specific standards. You see the pictures of windmills on there? That's a good example. The wind turbine needs a specific zoning standards that don't apply to other things. So anything that's got that going on is in Article four. Article five is the Site Design Review Chapter. This chapter actually borrows from a similar chapter in the current ordinance that staff and CNS department use to review site plans and make recommendations to the Planning Commission. This is a summary of anything you might need to know when putting together a design for a development. So not only does it direct you to other parts of Udo in terms of the physical layout of a site, it also directs you to some of those other ordinances and policies that Jenna mentioned earlier, so that all in one place, we say these are all the rules. That's part of being a Unified Development Ordinance. Even if something's not contained in Udo, Udo says you need to go to this document, and this rule applies to you. Article six is landscaping and green infrastructure article. I don't know if you heard, but we did actually have some praise for this article from a member of the public earlier, and I think we should all be proud of it. It is an innovative, forward-thinking landscaping and green infrastructure and low-impact development section. The next section is the lighting section. You know, this is designed to really strike that middle path between light pollution and safety and security, right? We need lighting, we don't want too much lighting, and that's what this article is designed to do. The next article is signage. As you know, signage is a big part of zoning. And this article, I think, should be easier to use than a lot of sign ordinances due to the charts. You see the chart on the page here? These go zone district by zone district, or cluster of zone districts by zone district. And then they lay out the types of signs available, show you pictures, and show you a diagram of what it means. Article nine is, this is where we put a lot of the stuff that wasn't big enough to put in its own article, so it's the general standards article, but there's very important things in here. Parking, not the number of parking spaces, as I said, that's in Article two, but things like how big a space needs to be, how big a drive aisle needs to be, paving requirements, that's all in Article nine. Bicycle parking, and this is an innovative thing in Udo, not many communities are doing this yet, you're seeing more and more do it, but you guys are ahead of the curve, requiring bicycle parking in places and uses where it's appropriate, just like we require automobile parking, making it easier to ride a bike as a mode of transportation, as well as recreation within the city. Article nine also gets into our standards on housing, principal dwelling units. Obviously, you know, one of our heavily talked about topics is conversions. The rules for those are included here in Article nine. Accessory structures, including accessory dwelling units, also in Article nine. And the types of things that a homeowner might need, like fences, that's included here. And then some other stuff are infill design regulations, which those of you who have worked with the Planning Commission are familiar with, those are brought into Udo from the old ordinance. The fair housing policy brought into Udo from the old ordinance, the borders rules brought into Udo, essential services, medical marijuana. The policy aspect of those is largely the same as the current ordinance, but they have been, the wording's been changed around to make it easier to understand. Article ten is streets, driveways, and sidewalks. Now, this is where some of those other ordinances Jenna talked about that have been combined in, they come in largely in ten and eleven. We worked with Transportation Services Department on this very closely, because understanding that the public realm, the street, is as important as the private realm when it comes to the character of an area, right? And as a city, you have control over that public realm in a way that your township neighbors don't. Now, we know we can't zone that public realm, those are engineering decisions ultimately. But the Udo does give guidelines, and they give guidelines based on zone districts, thus linking together engineering, design, and zoning. It also gives rules and regulations for developers that are building new roads, which we know we see a lot of in the city. Article eleven is where we brought in a lot of what's currently in the subdivision ordinance. This is regarding lot sizes, creating new lots, creating new neighborhoods, that's all in Article eleven. Article twelve is the processes, the various zoning processes that the Planning Commission, CNS, and yourselves all work within, those are all described in Article twelve. Again, we tried to use charts and things like that to try to make this as clear as possible. Article thirteen is regarding nonconformities. You know, as you may know, in zoning, if something is not within the rules but existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance, that's called a legal nonconformity. And those things are generally allowed to remain with some restrictions, those restrictions are here in Article thirteen. And Article fourteen is the definitions section. So if you look through Udo, you will notice that there are quite a few italicized words throughout the document. italicized words means that word is defined in the definitions section. So another way of trying to make Udo easier to use. If you come across a term of art, a technical term, or just a term that you're not exactly sure what it means, if it's italicized, it is defined here in Article fourteen. So that is the outline of the fourteen articles, how we organize Udo, what exactly is included on those three hundred and thirty-two pages. I want to switch gears here and talk a little bit about the process. This Udo development process undertaken by the Planning Commission and staff was a public process. It has been going on since, as Jenna mentioned, since, well, basically three years ago, since the spring of 2018, when City Council first budgeted and authorized Planning Commission to start beginning work on this, to hire us, and we're so glad that you did hire us, we appreciate that so much, and it's been a really amazing experience. So since then, we've been working in a public way, engaging with stakeholders, engaging with the public, all the way up to tonight. So I kind of want to walk through all that. There's really three categories of things that we did lump together on here, although they may be separate in some ways, there are special events and online opportunities, these are things that were big, public, anyone who wants to participate, love to have you come in, we did a lot of that stuff. We also did stakeholder presentations and discussions, where we got specific groups of people with a specific interest in a room or on Zoom and discussed things and came up with policy. Of course, we had public meetings, more formal public meetings, we had presentations to you guys, we had more formal hearings in front of the Planning Commission, you know, things that were sort of formally noticed and that kind of thing. So we had really three categories of outreach events. I'm going to walk through here, basically a timeline. We had our kickoff August twenty-eight, twenty eighteen. We worked through there, basically from there to November, we prepped for the charrette week, which many of you guys participated in. I think we had a lot of fun that week, we came up with a lot of ideas, many of which are still in the Udo, and we really came up with a framework for how the Udo was going to work during that really intensive week of planning and design. Jenna described the process that kind of went on, on a month-to-month basis, where she and I would meet, we'd meet with the Planning Commission, this was all ongoing. But as we went on, we continued to realize there were different things we needed to reach out to the public on. The first thing that kind of came up in the spring of 2019 was housing, which we're still discussing now. We went out to the public with an online housing survey, and that ran for several months. We also had a comment board up at the library, which was kind of a remote, in-person but remote, right? So people, anyone coming in the library could participate in that, it didn't have to be staffed. So that was available throughout the summer of 2019. Also, in summer of 2019, we went out to the industrial zone district, well, I'll call it the industrial zone district, the industrial area, the southeast side of town and other industrial businesses, and we said, what do you need out of the zoning ordinance? We got some great feedback from that. In summer of 2020, even in the midst of the pandemic, we came up with an opportunity to put some information online that I think has been really useful to people, which is the story map. It's on hollandudo.com if you haven't looked at it. It is interactive, it allows people to look up an individual parcel and understand the proposed zoning of that parcel on a case-by-case basis. It's a lot easier to understand, I think, than just like a PDF map or a paper map, right? You can really dive in, scroll around, kind of a Google Maps base. Jenna and I, last fall, recorded five video presentations that are on YouTube. Some of the information in there is a little dated, but we tried to get as much information out in that format as possible, so then those are still available. We also had a number, as I mentioned, a number of stakeholder discussion and sit downs. So going back towards the beginning of the process, in the summer of 2019, we worked with the neighborhood connectors, we went out to different areas that are planned to be in the Form Based Code, and talked to neighbors in those areas. We met with the DDA and with River View groups on specifically downtown issues, we met with the Central Park Neighborhood, we met with some of the neighborhood organizations that fall under the TNR district, we met with the Chamber of Commerce, and we met in the LDR areas, we kind of used the elementary schools as the gathering places, but we went out to places that are in the LDR zone district and met with residents in those places as well. Of course, we came to you guys. We have all the dates that we're in front of City Council throughout the process leading up to last fall, and then, of course, to this spring. We went to the DDA in formal meetings, we went to Historic District Commission, we went to PSD, we went to the Airport Authority, we actually had quite a few meetings with airport staff, and then we went to the Airport Authority as well. And of course, Planning Commission. And thank you again to Planning Commission, I know it's been said several times, but I want to say it again, thank you to Planning Commission, they worked really hard. They've been going above and beyond on this for three years. Basically, they've had an extra meeting every month, almost every month this entire process. And in addition to that, they had a lot of Udo discussions at their regularly scheduled meetings. So it's basically two Udo meetings a month for this entire stretch, and that has really been, they've really done some amazing work. In addition to that, they were even, on top of that, special Udo meetings that were scheduled at various times, including in the last few months. And then, that all kind of culminated last December in advisory public hearings. Now, as you know, the Planning Commission held their formal State Required, Zoning Enabling Act Required, public hearing earlier this month. But previous to that, the Planning Commission went out to the public and said, we need advice on some specific issues, and held advisory public hearings. They were held on December seventh and December tenth of 2020, and the Planning Commission sent postcards specifically out to groups of property owners that would fall under certain categories under Udo. So the first one was residential property owners, and the Udo makes a distinction between, and the current zoning ordinance does as well, between one to four dwelling units on a property and five or more. Basically, one to four, obviously that's not single family, but it's considered separate from multifamily, which is five or more. So you see that distinction come up a lot, including in the process. So in this case, property owners of one to four housing units on their lot that were potentially going to change zone district, they were noticed, there were one hundred and seventy-four of them. Property owners of other properties, non-residential or multifamily, that were potentially going to change zoning district, there were seven hundred and seventy-eight of them, they all received postcards. And then, the property owners in the LDR neighborhoods, excuse me, that would potentially be eligible for this conversion for two units, they were noticed with a postcard, there were over three thousand of them. And so we had great turnout at the advisory public hearings, but I think what was really kind of cool, and I do mean this, was really kind of cool, is that after those advisory public hearings, we saw a significant uptick in public engagement in the Udo process, and I'll get into the details of that in just a moment. In terms of how many people we were able to engage, we kind of have listed out here in the PowerPoint, you know, the numbers and all the things we did leading up to this past fall, and then at the bottom is what I was just getting at. Since late November, since those advisory public hearings, we've had seven hundred and one comments at meetings or in writing, four hundred and thirty-two different people, and yes, many of them were speaking in opposition to things. But what I want to say, as someone who does this in a number of different communities, is it was really neat to see the level of engagement, the level of critical analysis, the level of wanting to understand and doing the work to understand and engaging with the Planning Commission on a level where the Planning Commission could then take action. We saw a lot of that from residents. That's pretty unique, I don't necessarily see that everywhere. I've also been, in other communities, talking up the way that frankly, technology played a role in this. That, yes, it wasn't great to have to meet on Zoom, but when the Planning Commission was meeting in City Hall, at the same time, three o'clock on the fourth Tuesday of the month, we didn't get public engagement very much, even though those were public meetings. Once we got on Zoom and engaged members of the public, passed around, hey, all you have to do to attend the meeting is click this link, it was a hundred to a hundred and fifty people a meeting. And I thought it was pretty cool, and that's, it doesn't mean, oh, all our public engagement should be on Zoom now, no. But there was an opportunity there that didn't involve having to come down to City Hall, take time out of your day, take time off work, it was simply push a button, put in your headphones, and you can hear the deliberations and you can participate, and people did, and I think that was really great. So I want to talk now about the specific topics that have generated the most public feedback, and you heard many of them tonight. And then I'll talk about kind of where the Planning Commission went with that feedback on some of these issues. So the first one was the CNR, the Cottage Neighborhood Residential Zone District, which, just to give a quick background on, is for the Central Park Neighborhood, which has a unique character and was previously zoned R1. And the R1 district really wasn't designed for that unique character, so this new zone district was created. We had a lot of feedback on this district from residents of that area, and it actually was a very productive discussion that I think resulted in a district that is very responsive to their needs as they describe them, so we're pretty proud of that. The other district that got a lot of talk is the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, and this was more along the lines of these neighborhood business districts, which are really a strength of Holland, you guys have great neighborhood business districts. And this zoning district is for them, but the question is, okay, what does the next generation of building in those areas look like where you have development sites? How do we make sure it fits with the character of the neighborhood? I had a lot of discussion around that and came up with some things that are in the draft Udo. Jenna mentioned the waterfront public access easement, so I won't go in too much detail on that, suffice to say that we did have public comment on that, we did speak with the city attorney about it, and then we've come up with this system where it's more of an incentive and bonus system and less of a requirement. We also had a lot of discussion about downtown parking and the push and pull between the needs for residence parking and the need for retail and commercial parking, right? And how that plays into the minimum parking requirement in Udo. The current draft does say one space per dwelling unit, which actually is the same as what the current ordinance says. So after all that, we did, the current draft just kind of keeps it the same, but obviously there's a lot of discussion around that. Before I get into the last couple, I do want to take a step back and talk housing broadly. Obviously, we know, we've seen this, there's been a trend going for a number of years, nationally and locally, but that has become even more acute here and now than it has been, and that is a rapid increase in housing prices. Our understanding of the market is that there's an imbalance between demand and supply in housing, and again, this is a national, in some cases international situation, but it is felt acutely here and now. And there's a number of reasons for that, right? The Great Recession and materials costs, and so zoning is not the only solution, but we feel that Udo and zoning generally can be part of the solution. So the policy goal that Udo flows from is to allow for an increased supply of housing to meet growing demand, right? That's the one sentence, this is what we're trying to do. We have growing demand, supply's not meeting it, we need to make sure zoning's not artificially constraining that supply, and we need to figure out how we can do that appropriately within the city. It was also part of that goal that we wanted to make sure this increased housing supply came citywide, that way it can be supported by citywide infrastructure, and that way there are opportunities to live citywide. There are four key zoning tools that are used nationally, statewide, in trying to increase housing supply through zoning, or at least use zoning to push that process along. And Udo does make use of all of them, I'm just going to quick touch on how we do that. The first one is zoning undeveloped land for housing, that's kind of an obvious one, right? We've got undeveloped land, what do we want to do with it? We need housing, we should zone it for housing. Okay, and Udo does that. You don't, obviously, in the city of Holland, there isn't a ton of undeveloped land as a percentage of the city, but it is out there, and we did use these zone districts on your screen in those areas. The GMU district's one we're particularly proud of, because that actually allows everything from single-family homes all the way up to businesses, and gives a lot of flexibility and market responsiveness to some of our land on the edge of town. Second tool, enhance and expand our existing mixed-use areas. Jenna talked about the downtown and the Form Based Code. Downtown housing is a key part of the strategy, Udo does expand those opportunities, we talked about the building height, we talked about the downtown gateways. Udo also provides for opportunities for housing in our neighborhood centers, that upper-floor housing and other things like that in our mixed-use districts in our neighborhoods. Our third tool, and this is a little more innovative, and... But what I want to say, as someone who does this in a number of different communities, is it was really neat to see the level of engagement, the level of critical analysis, the level of wanting to understand and doing the work to understand and engaging with the planning commission on a, on a level where the planning commission could then take action. We saw a lot of that from residents. That's pretty unique. I don't necessarily see that everywhere. I've also been, in other communities, talking up the way that frankly, technology played a role in this. That, yes, it wasn't great to have to meet on Zoom. But when the planning commission was meeting in City Hall, at the same time, 3 o'clock on the fourth Tuesday of the month, we didn't get public engagement very much, even though those were public meetings. Once we got on Zoom and engaged members of the public passed around, "Hey, all you have to do to attend the meeting is click this link," it was 100 to 150 people a meeting. And I thought it was pretty cool. And that's, it doesn't mean, "Oh, all our public engagement should be on Zoom now." No. But, but there was an opportunity there that didn't involve having to come down to City Hall, take time out of your day, take time off work. It was simply push a button, put in your headphones, and you can hear the deliberations and you can participate, and people did. And I think that was really great. So, I want to talk now about the specific topics that have generated the most public feedback, and you heard, you heard many of them tonight. And then I'll talk about kind of where the planning commission went with that feedback on some of these issues. So the first one was the CNR, the Cottage Neighborhood Residential Zone District, which, just to give a quick background on, is for the Central Park neighborhood, which has a unique character and was previously zoned R1. And the R1 district really wasn't designed for that unique character. So this new zone district was created. We had a lot of feedback on this district from residents of that area. And it actually was a very productive discussion that I think resulted in a district that is very responsive to their needs as they described them. So we're pretty proud of that. The other district that got a lot of talk is the Neighborhood Mixed Use District. And this was more along the lines of these neighborhood business districts, which are really a strength of Holland. You guys have great neighborhood business districts. And this zoning district is, zone district is for them. But the question is, okay, what does the next generation of building in those areas look like where you have development sites? How do we make sure it fits with the character of the neighborhood? I had a lot of discussion around that and came up with some things that are in the draft Udo. Jenna mentioned the waterfront public access easement, so I won't go in too much detail on that. It's wise to say that we did have public comment on that. We did speak with the city attorney about it, and then we've come up with this system where it's more of a incentive and bonus system and less of a requirement. We also had a lot of discussion about downtown parking and the push and pull between the needs for residence parking and the need for retail and commercial parking, right? And how that plays into the minimum parking requirement in Udo. The current draft does say one space per dwelling unit, which actually is the same as what the current ordinance says. So after all that, we did, the current draft just kind of keeps it the same, but obviously there's a lot of discussion around that. Before I get into the last couple, I'd want to take a step back and talk housing broadly. Obviously, we know, we've seen this, there's been a trend going for a number of years, nationally and locally, but that has become even more acute here and now than it has been, and that is a rapid increase in housing prices. Our understanding of the market is that there's an imbalance between demand and supply in housing. And again, this is a national, in some cases international situation, but it is felt acutely here and now. And there's a number of reasons for that, right? The Great Recession and materials costs and, so zoning is not the only solution. But we feel that the Udo and zoning generally can be part of the solution. So the policy goal that Udo flows from is to allow for an increased supply of housing to meet growing demand, right? That's the one sentence, this is what we're trying to do. We have growing demand, supply's not meeting it, we need to make sure zoning's not artificially constraining that supply, and we need to figure out how we can do that appropriately within the city. It was also part of that goal that we wanted to make sure this increased housing supply came citywide. That way it can be supported by citywide infrastructure, and that way there are opportunities to live citywide. There are four key zoning tools that are used nationally, statewide, in trying to increase housing supply through zoning, or at least use zoning to push that process along. And Udo does make use of all of them. I'm just going to quick touch on how we do that. The first one is zoning undeveloped land for housing. That's kind of an obvious one, right? We've got undeveloped land, what do we want to do with it? We need housing, we should zone it for housing. Okay. And Udo does that. You don't, obviously in City of Holland, there isn't a ton of undeveloped land as a percentage of the city, but it is out there. And we did, we did use these zone districts on your screen in those areas. The GMU district's one we're particularly proud of because that actually allows everything from single-family homes all the way up to businesses and gives a lot of flexibility and market responsiveness to some of our, our land on the edge of town. Second tool, enhance and expand our existing mixed-use areas. Jenna talked about the downtown and the Form Based Code. Downtown housing is a key part of the strategy. Udo does expand those opportunities. We talked about the building height, we talked about the downtown gateways. Udo also provides for opportunities for housing in our neighborhood centers, that upper-floor housing and other things like that in our mixed-use districts in our neighborhoods. Our third tool, and this is a little more innovative and a little more forward-thinking, but, and you guys are on, kind of on the forefront of this with Udo, but other communities are starting to do it, is converting some of these non-residential areas that we have in the city to mixed-use. Again, in an intentional and thought-out way, but we have our suburban-style commercial corridors, right? We have Waverly Road, we have South Washington, we have some others. These are areas where right now you get a lot of one-story buildings and a lot of big parking lots. And we're not saying that's all going to disappear overnight, but we know the market for retail is headed this way and the market for housing is headed this way. So zoning, Udo opens up the opportunities for mixed-use, and it would be mixed-use, it wouldn't be housing-only, but for mixed-use development on those corridors. Similarly, in our, what we call the RMU Zone District, which is more of the older, low-slung industrial, those are places that are already sort of turning over in terms of their uses. The RMU district is reactive to that and allows for housing. And the last aspect of this is, within the industrial district, while saving plenty of land for industrial, the Udo does open the opportunity through this non-industrial outlot idea for housing to be built within that area. So there is an opportunity within Udo to take some of that industrial land and say, "Hey, you need worker housing? Will you hear, we hear you need worker housing? How about you take a corner of your lot and build apartments? You don't have to change zoning to do that." All right. And then the fourth tool is gentle density in established neighborhoods. The goal here, of course, is to increase housing supply while maintaining the character, right? So what, actually, I'm not going to talk to it this slide, I want to talk to it next slide, some of the specific aspects of this, understanding that these are the parts of Udo that are getting the most conversation. So I'm kind of going to go back to this format. These were our largely talked about issues, these is what we heard about tonight. First thing, TNR Zone District, the lot size and the frontage width in order to do more than one housing unit, right? In the current zoning ordinance, for every 4,800 square feet of lot space on a lot that's at least 60 feet wide, you can have a housing unit. So if you have 4,800 times two, you can have two dwelling units. And right now, there are 171 properties that meet that description, and that's about 7% of the area that's zoned TNR. As of last Thanksgiving or so, the draft Udo included a reduction in that square footage, so an increase in density, to 3,250 square feet and reducing the width to 50 feet. And by doing that, now we had 881 potentially eligible properties for duplexes. That's 37% of the area zoned TNR. After hearing public feedback, the planning commission altered the draft to 4,000 square feet per unit, keeping the 50-foot, and that brought us to 248 eligible properties, which is about 10%. So after all that, what we've done is taken the availability of two units or availability of duplexes, eligible properties within TNR from 7% of the district to 10% of the district, which is an increase, an increase of 70-plus eligible properties. But that's just giving an idea of the scope and scale of what that change does. Second one is the LDR two-unit conversions and attached accessory dwelling units. So right now, in LDR, through the current zoning ordinance process for accessory dwelling units, property owner can build a detached accessory dwelling unit, right? So that's a, excuse me, a separate structure in back of the house that's used as an accessory dwelling unit. In those cases, the principal structure has to be owner-occupied, and there are other rules and regulations and processes involved. The proposal, as of again about last Thanksgiving, that was in the Udo, was to basically allow, well, not basically, was to allow duplexes, two-unit buildings on any lot in LDR 10,000 square feet or greater. It was just considered, in that draft, it was permitted use, it was just allowed. We heard public comment, and the planning commission did change the draft. So now, they kind of went a couple different directions at once here. One is expanding the accessory dwelling units from just detached to detached or attached. And the, again, with that 10,000 square foot minimum. And also potentially, well, no, the document allows it, but from a property owner's perspective, it's potential. The opportunity to do a conversion from a single-family house to two units. Now, in order to do that, there are now restrictions in the draft, the 10,000 square-foot minimum. The, a requirement that the exterior of the house not be expanded or altered other than adding a door. So you can't double the size of the house and then do that, it has to be within the existing footprint. And a notice sent out to the neighbors within 300 feet, with the neighbors then being able to appeal and require a special exception from the zoning board of appeals before the conversion can be created. So that is what is currently in the Udo on that topic. Good point. Yes. And I mentioned that the first time, but I should have mentioned it the second time. The last thing in that, in the duplexes in LDR is, at least one half has to be owner-occupied. So, and we enforce that through the PRE, right? So at least one half has to have its PRE in order for the conversion to be approved in the first place and in order for it to continue over time, you know, the time of rental inspections and that sort of thing.
And Chris, I'm going to point out one, one additional restriction that's on there that I know I've gotten a lot of comments on. Are short-term rentals allowed on any of those?
No. Good, good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's true. No, no short-term rentals, no bed and breakfast, all of that would be prohibited once the conversion takes place. So with that, I really just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to staff who've worked tirelessly. I want to say thank you to the planning commission for all of the extra effort they put in. I want to say thank you to council for all the support. I want to say thank you to the public and the stakeholders of this community who have really shown their love for this community in the way they participated in this process. And again, as someone who does this, this is my full-time job, is doing this stuff, we don't always see this. We get, you know, you see, sometimes with zoning, you see empty rooms and blank stairs. We have not gotten that here. We've seen love for the community and we've seen passion about the future of the community, and I just want to thank everyone for that. And with that, we look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I've got a suggestion for, for two reasons. One is, it's a lot of information to digest, and two is, we've got two people missing. My suggestion would be that if we've got questions for, for staff at this point, or for Chris, the consultant, that we do that. But then the suggestion would be that we perhaps hold off discussion on this until we have the other members of council here, and that council has the opportunity to digest a whole lot of this information that we try to, we get another study session on the books fairly quickly. I'm seeing some head nods here, does that sound good to?
That's a good idea.
That looks good, sounds good to council members. Mr. Peters, you're the only one I'm not seeing anything from, does that sound good to you? Good, all right. So with that, questions for, for staff members at this point? Scott, I see you with your mic.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if it's directed towards staff or the city manager, but regarding the waterfront zoning, rezoning for the waterfront, I know there was a lot of questions about property rights along the edge of the, you know, of the lake. What I was wondering is, there was some legal advice provided to the planning commission, or I'm not sure if it was in closed session, I don't know if it was open session, but I would like to know that that information also could be shared with this board likewise, of what the attorney's opinion was regarding that land, being able to use that land, or require, requesting or requiring access to the lake.
I was just confirming exactly how that was done with the planning commission, and the answer is yes, we will make sure that we make arrangements so that council gets that same closed session analysis.
Yeah, so we did a lot of work, right? Waterfront Holland, we did a lot of work, asked a lot of questions, and the big one that kept coming up over and over again, the community wanted access to the lake. That was just a simple, community wanted access to the lake. Looking between two buildings is really access to the lake, right? It's a visual access. But I don't think that's what they meant. So I want to make sure I understand what that we mean by the scope of what we're recommending here regarding waterfront access.
I will, I will say, Scott, there too, there, there has been some discussion too about what Waterfront Holland said about access to the lake, and, and what they said and what that's interpreted to mean. One of the guiding principles that I think is unshakable, right, is access to and enjoyment of the waterfront. But there was some, and I was in some of those discussions, is that a continuous access to the water, or was that just ability to access to the water, and does that mean continuous or not? So that's a Waterfront Holland thing that we can talk about too. But Scott, absolutely, we will make arrangements to make sure that council gets the same information planning commission got from the, from the attorney.
Thank you.
You bet.
In addition, you mentioned that every five years we're supposed to update the master plan, or at least that's the target, right, to try and update it. Are we suggesting that Udo here, because we're doing so many, we've revisited so many aspects of zoning, that we may not update the master plan as, or are we coming back to that again? We're going to be coming back to the master plan, revisiting that again?
Yes, the master plan will be revisited. That's on our scope for 2022. We don't need to necessarily rewrite the master plan, it's a look, see, and then updating it accordingly.
And I'm just going to add in there, Jenna's correct. Mark, why don't you come on up? Because there was a lot of things that we've gone through recently, but Mark, when he did his budget presentation, talked about, while we had talked about identifying the master plan, you gave an update in your budget presentation about kind of where we slotted that. And why don't you remind everybody of that plan?
Yeah. So, we actually, with the master plan update on, kind of looking at that a little bit more, we decided to push that off to, well, not to be in this coming fiscal year, we really kind of looked at that again and thought, we need to, we need to digest the Udo process and make sure that we, we get education out there that everybody's up to speed with that. We did have some other planning endeavors that we asked for in the budget, and primarily, when the Jenna's going to be spearheading with the Transportation Services Department doing a, a non-motorized transportation plan, we've got, that plan is like 13 or 14 years old, it's really antiquated. So that is a very high priority, and then we're, we're also got some money budgeted in there to do a, a look at some other neighborhood areas, kind of in the south end of where we looked at with Waterfront Holland, kind of the South Shore Village area, and kind of taking a visionary look at that area too. So in discussions with Keith and so forth, we thought, you know, the planning commission might appreciate a little breather also, so we're, we're kind of looking now towards the next fiscal year to potentially look at the master plan update at that time. But I would like to, I want to agree with Jenna, it's always kind of been our thought process that the scope of that would not be a big, huge rewrite again, but it would be kind of looking at it and getting some targeted improvements and kind of a refresh to that. So we know we missed some things the last time around in 2017, so we do, we do want to do that, but that's going to take a little bit more time yet.
And Mark, that approach and timing is acceptable, falls within the range of the state planning enabling act?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so the five-year update, that's the, it is in the, the planning law, but I don't think the state's going to come out here if we're six months a little late on the five-year aspect. So I mean, I think that we are completely fine with that timing, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just two more questions.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
So in Article 10 you referenced, we're talking about streets and sidewalks in that section, right? We have a number of board policies that are existing, we'll talk about walkable streets and accessibility and things of that nature. Will, when we adopt this, this Article 10, will it replace much of what we've already adopted in those type of policies? Will that be replaced? Or will we continue to have both of these different, two different documents?
Can you specify what the other documents are?
Well, remember when we talked about Hope Avenue, we were talking about, we have board policy on how we're going to redesign streets with sidewalks and curbs and width, and that becomes our, I think, the walkable streets policy that we adopted from the state, I believe. So that's what I'm looking at, I mean, that's one of a few that we have.
Sure.
Are we going to, and if we are, can we at least identify those that we're going to replace and so we can repeal them, or we can just make sure those are, there's no conflict with board policy versus ordinance?
Sure. So Udo is actually talking about private, or streets being built by developers, not public streets. So public street policy is completely separate from the Unified Development Ordinance.
But we did use that as part of, let's say, on 40th Street, when we did that condo association, we were looking at that policy about accessibility, we used that as a policy to drive conversation there.
Yeah, so the complete streets, are you talking about the complete streets policy? So complete streets is the policy that, that the streets and driveways and sidewalks ordinance is really implement, is implementing. So it's, it's looking at that and it's making sure that there's different realms of street, of different realms within a street right-of-way. So it, it goes into a lot of detail about those different zones and requiring sidewalk on both sides and things of that sort. However, the key change from what is existing is that currently developers need to get a variance from city council per subdivision ordinance in order to have, well, first of all, a private street, second of all, if they don't want to provide sidewalk, that regulation is, is proposed to be turned over to planning commission so that they can make that determination while looking at a development. So it doesn't need to come up to the city council for that, for those questions.
Okay.
Scott, no, this is great, keep asking questions, but one thing, probably like the Hope Avenue one in particular, that I don't think is disjointed, but we'll make sure and double-check that we're not like, create, no one wants to create existing conflicts, right? So we'll double-check that, but the biggest...
We also have an assessment policy too, I believe, real assessment policy that also ties, so I just want to make sure we de-conflict as much as we possibly can so we don't have debate on that.
That's what I was just going to address, is that the street assessment policy really in its own way is connected to, but does not conflict with what's written in here. The street assessment policy more is if something's going to get done or not, and how it's going to be paid for. So we'll double-check, but I don't, I don't see that being a built-in conflict. And that street assessment policy, I think we've already gotten pretty good direction from all of you on that, but that is on the list of things to do with Brian that we're going to bring that back and kind of tighten that up once and for all.
Okay. Next question I brought up to Ms. Elswich before, when she was before us, regarding an appeal of, of an issue regarding zoning, if some of these rezoning takes place and somebody were to appeal that, or at least appeal what you're approving, it went to an administrator for determination. And what I heard tonight was it's going to the zoning board of appeals rather than to an administrator. Has that been a change in the, in the, in the Udo process?
No, so an appeal would go to staff to review, and then, then staff would either provide it to the zoning board of appeals or board of appeals, depending on what the circumstances, or to the planning commission.
But if the zoning administrator felt that it met all the requirements, they had the discretion whether to move it on to zoning board of appeals or not?
No, it, it's required to go, to move on if that request is, if there is a request. The requirement is that there is a, a request, that it's, so that that information is then provided with the board or commission, and that the hope is, is that then the board or commission would just take up that one specific issue. Um, and that, um, the hope is, is that then the border commission would just take up that one specific issue. Um, regarding, uh, the, the proposal.
And the last, um, so it was mentioned several times, Udo policy or Udo goals by the planning commission. Where did those come from? Where, where, where was, was that done within the planning commission? Was that done by the consultant? How did the Udo goals or form?
I mean, that, that originally was established with, uh, Mark and I discussing, Mark Vanderpeloge and I discussing, um, different goals. Um, reviewing the master plan and then, um, consulting with planning commission. Well, first, um, uh, consulting with different department staff, um, finding out what their goals might be. Uh, and then consulting with planning commission.
Okay, and then finally, just thank you to Brooke as the chairperson, the planning commission, all the effort by your division. To bring forth a document that I'm sure we're going to have more discussion about. I hope that, so we can make sure it's everything that our committee wants, but thank you for all the work you've done.
And I'm, I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Tethru, but I'm going to do a thank you to you too, Scott, because I think a lot of people may not realize. You were on planning commission for at least the first half of this process as well. So thank you for your, your hard work in getting this project rolling as well. So, Mike?
Just one thing, kind of dovetailing off Scott in the street. And I've always had a concern with this where we start out with a subdivision or whatever that it's going to be a private street. And the next thing we know, it becomes a public street, but they don't meet the requirements that are set forth. I'm hoping that there's some stopgaps in there and that, that doesn't vary too much. I mean, we had the discussion with 36th Street, uh, there's been a couple of other ones. So I just, I don't want to see us get into substandard streets, um, specifically for, uh, public safety to have to be able to get in there and things like that. So we've got to be very, very careful about that.
Any other questions for staff members?
Yes.
Yeah, Nikki?
Um, and I'll save some of mine for the later discussion at another date. I don't want to get into it. But I was happy to hear there will be some transportation discussion at some point because I think transportation is huge. When we are discussing an increase in housing, whether building new housing, um, increasing density in different ways. I think you can't, uh, in a, in a limited space with limited number of streets and widths of streets. Uh, you, you have to think about that just as you do with parking. And, um, and I may have missed this, I, I just have a question. When you're going through the, um, four ways of achieving the policy goal of. When you talked about the traditional TNR and you said you, there was a possibility of going from seven percent to 10%. And so in the other district, which is, would be LDR now. Was there a mention of what it was, the possibility rental, uh, or now, and then what, what it would become? What, what's its potential could be?
Do you have those numbers Jenna?
Yeah, so currently it's not, it's not allowed. So currently in the low density residential zone district. Um, a detached accessory dwelling unit is, is permitted. As is any single-family home citywide.
Correct.
Um, however, there, it is not allowed for there to be any attached accessory dwelling units or these conversions. So there are currently, um, actually 33, uh, two-unit homes in the low-density residential zone district. Um, 16 of which will become conforming, uh, if this is proposed because they're on lots that are greater than 10,000 square feet. Um, but again, there's 3,122, uh, properties that are 10,000 square feet or greater. Uh, so that is about 70% of the LDR zone district.
Okay. Which won't happen, but if you're ever going to convert, that's what you could do.
That would be the eligibility, right?
Okay, that's good to know.
All of them are allowed to be rented?
Yes.
And which?
Currently, currently zoning versus proposed?
Yes, currently or, oh, I'm sorry, so.
Sorry, I should speak into the mic. So currently all of those units can be rentals as a single-family home.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we could, in a, in LDR.
Yep.
Any homeowner could rent their home. But it can't be, what, how does that fit in with short-term rentals? It can't be a short-term rental? Or I, or I could go away for a year and rent my house? Is that what we're saying? What do we?
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm going to look for help here. So currently, all of those homes can be rentals. Long-term.
Okay.
And then we have the short-term rental that you guys instituted. You converted it from a pilot program to a permanent program. And kind of the, um, the limit, I would say the governor, the governor on that, right? On the, is that there's a tw- there's a 25 max per, per the community. Um, and then proposed, it's, they can be converted, but one of those units always has to be home. Um, owner occupied. Um, and then the other unit, neither of those could be a short-term rental.
Yes, and if I bought a house, assuming the housing stock was available, in an LDR district, proposed LDR. I could just buy it and rent it. And I could now. So that will remain. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Jay?
Um, I have just two basically, um, questions that I get a lot. And one of them has to do with, um, the parking thing when you're talking about the northern tip of the city. And the larger buildings and the smaller development, the ability to build smaller units. Um, I mean, we're all in receipt of a letter from the chairman of the DDA. Um, and I've talked to a few of the folks on the DDA and it's pretty clear to me they, they have a pretty strong opinion. On what this Udo currently reads. And I'm just wondering, where, is there some resolution to that? Or is this the best we can do? And there, this is just, planning commission is going to do it and we vote for Udo the way it is right now? That's the way the parking is going to be handled? Is that how it sits right now?
Well, I think, um, well, I, I guess it's pretty clear there's a disagreement between the DDA and the planning commission. And as we went through this process, the DDA very clearly said one thing and the planning commission very clearly said another thing. Ultimately, it's council's decision.
Yeah.
Right, you are, um, council has very few limit, no limits on how you can amend this thing, right? Nothing you're forced to do in here. So, um, you know, ultimately, I think it's, it may be up to council to resolve that disagreement.
Well, thanks for that. The other thing, um, I've, I've said this before. I live in the historic district and a lot of people I know have lived in the historic district for as long as I've lived in the historic district. Um, we've recently done, uh, I, I think that, I told the story before, in 1990, when I bought my house on 11th Street. I had to sign a paper at the, with the mortgage folk saying, you, we're just, you've got to recognize you're buying in a declining neighborhood. That was 1990. Um, I was, what is, how does preservation in your mind? How does the historic district, these larger, older homes? Let's, here's a scenario that gets painted to me more than once. Um, if I were an older guy, um, I lived in my house, people die in these houses. Um, my, I don't have a whole lot of family, somebody, my daughter doesn't want it, she said, well, let's just sell it. In the historic district, with the rules that they have there, I'm assuming they're still in play. If somebody wanted to buy that house and a lot of those houses, you could put three, you could put three units in there. Would that be, would that be permissible? You could turn that home, that, that, all these long-term homestead homes could in fact, over time. Become larger, uh, places for three, four bed, three or four, uh, separate units, I guess.
Yes, as written, it, it could, uh, those houses could be converted.
Okay, so, so how else does this, as you've talked about through the historic district, as you have, they've talked about it. What other, are there some things in here that we're not, haven't been presented tonight? That were discussed about the preservation of some of the thing, the historic preservation that we have? Those efforts, specifically the historic district. And it's a pretty big footprint in the middle of everything we're talking about here. Um, is there anything we should know about that I, I just haven't been privy to? Or they, that they've discussed that we don't know that maybe we should think about, you know, let's go to that with our eyes wide open?
Well, the historic district standards are not incorporated into Udo. They're not superseded by Udo. They are, they remain as they are and enforced by the historic district commission. They apply to anything and Udo says that if you, um, if there are historic district requirements or approvals, you must receive those. And if you don't, nothing in Udo matters, right? You have to get over that historic district hurdle in order to do anything in Udo.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, I, I think it is, it is accurate that any lot in that TNR district that meets those dimensional requirements. Could be subdivided into additional units. Um, that's also the case in the current zoning ordinance. Udo just changes the number, right? Just, just, it, it, and it does bring in, like I said, more, uh, lots that are not currently eligible. Or lots being eligible for more units than they are now. But again, on the order of seven percent to 10%. And on 11th Street specifically, I think, um, I mean, you, you may be able to rattle off the, the square footages. I, I can't personally, but I could picture it. Um, you know, and, and although we actually do have a map, so we might be able to say whether there are properties on 11th Street that would be. Have their status changed under this, I don't know if you have that data written for me, John?
Yeah, I do, and, and there would. Um, however, having said that, with preservation, the exterior would not change at all. Um, and to be eligible, the numbers that we have for eligibility are just if meeting the square footage and the, uh, lot width requirements. They're not, you know, taking into effect, would that lot be able to hold the parking? Would that lot be able to meet the setbacks, um, that, for the parking, uh, things like that? So, so that, that needs to be considered as well. And then also really the financial feasibility of these conversions. Um, Ryan Kilpatrick came in and did a, a study in, uh, in Public Common. It was mentioned about that $180,000, uh, dollar, um, amount. Uh, and what that was is, is for the true cash value to be $180,000. Um, or less is what would financially be feasible for a two-unit, uh, to be developed. Um, so the likelihood, again, that, that historic homes, uh, will be developed. They're, they're, um, far, as we know, far greater in value than $180,000. Um, and, uh, and again, there are several different hurdles that a property owner would need to go through, uh, with the historic district commission. So certainly I could provide you that data.
I don't, I, I figured. Well, the other thing is too, many of those homes are very large homes on incredibly small lots. It's nice for snow plowing and, and shoveling the driveway, but, uh, there's, that, that would probably limit, um, some of that too.
Yeah, I, I direct you to, um, section 9.02A of the Udo. Um, which among other things, addresses the issue of parking within the TNR district. Um, which it would be a, a key impediment to some of these conversions because they wouldn't be able to meet those requirements. Or, or actually limitations on the percentage of the lot that can be paved, uh, to accommodate the parking that would be needed for the number of units.
But, and just, you know, one point is that, that, that does already exist. So that 50%, 75% isn't changing.
Nothing in here about suggesting on-street parking year-round?
Nope, that one's up to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Raul?
I think, I think a lot of my questions are kind of being answered, at least enough for the next time's discussion. But, uh, for the, the TNR, the, uh, so the current, current eligible properties are, were 171. How many, how many of those are actually being used?
So 30, 30, right now, well, inter, so the, that number that we gave you was, uh, the two units. So currently there are 30, um, existing properties with two plus units in the TNR zone district.
And then out of the, the 248, would you be able to say how many two, how many three, how many four? Like would be, would be eligible, like for those that break down?
Yeah, so the 248 is actually for the, the two units. So what we did was we just used the largest number, um, in the data because it's far less. Um, so let me, I can give you, I can also provide this to council if you'd like. This is a full analysis that was provided to planning commission. Um, but so for three units, uh, the, um. Okay, so three units. There would be. 63 eligible properties, um, and currently there are 18. And then with the four units. Um, there are currently 20, there would be 23 eligible properties for the four units and currently there are six.
Is, is there a map for this as well that would like show that? You have that?
Yeah, yeah, again, I'll, I'll provide that for you.
You almost can tell where these properties are if Jase isn't eligible. Uh, some are, it's all, and you can all, you almost can pinpoint which of, you know, um. Potentially of the four units, if there's six eligible now and there will be 23, you know where those are, don't you? So do developers. Uh, do you have to be owner occupied in those or just the two units?
No, in the TNR zone district, there's not an owner occupied, uh, requirement.
And with the parking, if there's a, you have parking requirements, are people allowed? I mean, as, as I read some of these letters and I, as you say, there's a lot of material and I'm glad this is not our only session. Uh, what about parking? May you pave more of your backyard or side yard for parking or does it have to be on street or how's that work?
Okay, right here.
We'll get, we'll come back to you, Raul, sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, continue, Raul, sorry.
I, I haven't answered that question if that's, that's right.
Yeah, go ahead, why don't you, why don't you answer Nikki since we've got it and then we'll circle back to Raul, so.
So without getting into every single detail, and again, section 9.02A of the Udo is what addresses this. And there's a graphic that shows it. And as Jenna mentioned, it's the same rule that's in the current ordinance, but the Udo has a nice graphic. Uh, was she asking about LDR or TNR?
Were you talking about LDR?
No, a TNR.
TNR, okay. So the answer is that paving in the rear yard is allowed, but there's a limitation on it. And the limitation is based on the percentage of the yard. So the smaller the yard, the fewer parking spaces can be created, right? And there is not an allowance to just blanket pave an entire backyard and throw as many parking spaces back there as you want. There are limitations, uh, in the backyard. There's also limitations on paving inside yards. So, um, there are rules about that and, and like Jenna said, they're actually in the current ordinance already.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Raul.
No, no, and you were kind of beginning maybe to touch on this a little bit, but the, uh. So we, can we not require, um, owner occupied rentals? Like the, like the same way that we're doing in the LDR and TNR?
So we had a, a turning opinion, um, and the issue came down to that in the LDR, it would all be one, the same use. Um, everywhere in the LDR. So, so everywhere on all of these properties that would be eligible, they would all require one owner occupied, um, develop, or one owner occupied unit. Um, whereas in TNR, there, Ron's opinion was that there isn't enough of a intent, enough of a rationale, if you will. Um, as to why, um, some of the homes. um, as to why, um, some of the homes would be non-owner occupied, not have to have an owner occupied element. So existing, there's no owner occupied element, as you know, for two to four units. Um, so why some of them would not have to have the owner occupied? And then why, what the rationale then would be that, that some of them would?
Because of what's already existing then, the, the, I mean, that's where we'd have the issue because of what's there now versus what we'd allow then. And there's the inconsistency then.
The inconsistency of that. And then the conversation was also that, well, if we continue to say that on lots that are four thousand eight hundred square feet per unit, um, uh, that there doesn't need to be an owner occupied as it stands now. Um, and then on lots though that are four thousand square feet per unit, there does have to be. Then that's further increasing that inconsistency.
And, and just to throw this out, out there, I mean, I, maybe it was a wrong thing. I don't know that. Can we put this thing to a vote? I mean, like, what is that? Is that an option? Is that a thing? Is that something we even entertain, right? I mean, for that, kind of these more contentious topics, is that a thing?
I want to be careful and I'm actually looking more at Chris on this one because th- th- this is an authority that I think, Chris, resides in the planning commission to make a recommendation and for you guys by law and charter to basically make a determination and establish. So that's probably all I'd want to say on that, other than that additionally to have a vote where you guys, I will say this, Jay asked a good question and you guys have the ability where it's not like, well, just we don't like something, so we're going to turn it back to the planning commission. You guys sit in a spot where you can surgically go in and change a word or change a section or change a standard and you guys can do that. Kind of this vote thing is you, like, that's not a vehicle by which you can go in and surgically change things. It's really, it, it's just a total up or down. Um, and I guess legally, the answer is ye- yes, you could. But really then it's, uh, do, do we go back three years and start over from scratch? Or do we adopt it? And I look, like, I think that's maybe not a legal answer, Raul. That isn't a legal answer, Raul. But I think that's a practical, just something to have in your thinking of that, that public vote has absolutely no ability to kind of be surgical.
I'm, I'm going to let our chief governance officer jump in here.
I'm, I'm just going back and I'm not going to try to play a lawyer here, but I'm just going back to what we've had in the past and something similar to this had to be done by referendum. It could not be, we could not suggest it, we could not initiate it. Um, if, if it's going to be a big issue, I would suggest that we probably ask Ron. But I'm just going by a past practice in the very recent past that that's what happened. Uh, we, we were not legally able to do that. It had to be by referendum.
Yeah. Chris, you want to jump in on this?
Yeah, so I just, um, I just want to make sure one thing's clear and that is that the draft you have in front of you, recommended by the planning commission, is editable, right? The city council can by consensus instruct staff to revol- revise this and then subsequently adopt it without sending it back to the planning commission. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that I would follow Ron's advice on whether you can initiate a referendum on something. Um, or whether that has to come from a petition. Um, but I, 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 I think that this, this discussion in the next, you know, if we have another study session, et cetera, should, should probably rev- resolve around, here are the topics in Udo council wants to talk about to get a consensus and potentially change within the planning commission recommendation. I think that's probably your process going forward. Once you've resolved the issues to the satisfaction of, of at least a majority of you, then, then you'd have a final vote.
Yeah, Lynn.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Um, so how would you, how are the non-conforming two unit properties in LDR dealt with? Like they're just non-conforming until they're sold and then they have to be owner occupied after that?
Um, yeah, so actually whenever anything is expanded for beyond a certain percentage of its state equalized value, then it does need to come into conformance. So, um, so that, so if they were to, you know, like try to, um, put in addition or, or, or make it, make any improvement really exterior, um, then, uh, that's what would, would occur.
Okay, that's helpful. And then we have is on, um, a percentage, like I'm surprised we didn't talk about this, but or maybe we did and I just don't remember, the, having an impervious structure, a surface maximum in some of the, um, residential areas. Cause I, that's something that's been coming up a bit and I think you've answered it to my satisfaction, but I think that a maximum might be, um, an interesting thing to think about. So I don't, I don't know. Did we talk about that?
I don't believe that we did talk about that. Um, I know that staff talked about it at, at a certain point. Mark. Um, I, I, I don't recall honestly what the, what the rationale for not doing that was.
I do. Oh. I think I do. I, I believe that, so, um, section six point oh four A, I have it in front of me. That's why I'm coming up with section numbers here. Section six point oh four A addresses maximum pervious surface. Um, but as you mentioned, residential districts are exempt from those requirements. And I believe the reason we came up with that is because we thought that the enforcement mechanism for that was going to be too onerous on homeowners. Uh, or even la- you know, small time landlords. It was just, it was too onerous for, for residential to try to regulate somebody putting in a back patio and how much impervious surface is that? And it was just, it, it added a lot of bureaucracy. So we decided to not, to, to exempt those districts.
Can I understand that a little bit better?
Sure.
When you're talking about residential backyard, paving over.
Yeah.
It's specific, it's up to fifty percent for parking specifically and the rest of it could be paved over for recreational purpose?
Uh, I suppose, although if someone was to do that, I think that there'd probably be an enforcement issue of wait, you calling that a patio and that a parking space, but it's the same pavement. How do we know you're not going to park on it? I don't know, Mark. How would, how would you think zoning administrators handle?
Mark, if you're going to answer that, please come up with a.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
And maybe rephrase the question and I'll give you a few more seconds to.
Do you want me to, do you want me to rephrase the question for you? I like to do that and then you can, that'll give you some time to think about the answer. So I think that, that what we're talking about is there are limitations right now on the amount of paving you can do parking specifically and the maximum in a backyard is fifty percent of the backyard can be paved. But the question is, well, what if I want to put in a patio that's pavers or a patio that is the exact same material as the parking spaces that I have? Do we regulate that in regard to the maximum amount of lot area that is covered with impervious surfaces? Did I get that right? Is that what we're talking about? Did I miss it? Close enough? Okay.
That, that, that sounds very good. And you know what? If, if Tricia was here, I would be looking back at her right now and going, Tricia, how do we enforce that? So I don't have an absolute answer for it. We, I'd have to research that and, and, and out of all fairness, I don't want to say that something that's inaccurate tonight. So, but I, I do know that we, you know, we do focus on parking. The area where people park in their rear yard have to meet those standards. And from what I understand, yes, you can have patio areas. Um, if it's patio blocks or whatever it may be. So, but this is where I want to check in. I mean, if you're saying, if it's the same exact material that you have in your patio as you do for your, your driveway, your parking area, I mean, yeah, how is that enforced? So I want to check into that, but there's, there is differences between where you're parking your cars and where you're using it for a patio area, or even if you got a kid who's got a, even a basketball court or, or something like that in the backyard. Those I believe are treated a little differently, but I want to be, I want to check to be absolutely sure. Okay?
Well, just one other, just follow up on that. One, one of the gentlemen that spoke tonight, I think, makes a good comment about how much of our side yards, we have already been paved over for parking requirements. Um, I don't want to turn this into a parking conversation, but that you're talking about neighborhood character here, right? Um, more and more pavements, um, I guess I just want to think about that one a little bit because you're talking about pe- people's backyards. These big houses have families. Um, the character, green environment, per- impervious things. I almost feel like we should be going the other way instead of saying, well, we're, we're not going to worry about that at this juncture. So, I'm not, I don't think that's what we said, but I, I just, oh, let me think on that one.
Yeah, and then I think there's a, there's a clarification too, Jake, because I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to double check and actually if I'm right, I want it said out loud. The Udo is not changing the percentage of a backyard that can be paved, correct? It's not increasing that amount. The amount currently as of today is fifty percent. Under the Udo, it's fifty percent, correct?
Correct, though there is not a impervious surface, uh, requirement now, nor is Udo proposing it for the residential neighborhoods. Udo is proposing that requirement for other zone districts um, that are not in the neighborhoods. Um, so for instance, a garage could take up the entire backyard. Um, it doesn't have that paving requirement of fifty percent.
Okay.
So there is a maximum of fifty percent?
That's for paving.
Okay.
And parking. The one thing I just don't know is, is if you pave it for a basketball court and you're pave, or you're paving it for uh, parking, does that, is that different? Um, but I can tell you that, that what we're talking about specifically is not just pa- parking, I mean, paving, but it's impervious surface um, altogether. So that includes the building, that includes anything that's not, uh, permeable to water.
Lynn, Lynn, are you good?
Well, I think we need to have some follow up.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, do you have other questions?
No.
Okay. And Raul, did we, did I divert away from you again? I'm sorry.
It's a female thing.
Control here. I'm sorry. It's, and you're, and, and my, Mike is trying to keep me on task, but, yeah.
No, I'm not. I, just, just one more ques- so I just wanted to understand, like I, so I serve up with the DDA. Yeah, I mean, I, I sit there, so I know kind of where their heads at. But to hear a little bit more of the rationale and kind of where, where we are with, uh, the north downtown parking situation, how, how it's that one and not the tiered and, right? Yeah, so just to understand that and kind of the rationale with.
Can we take that? Um, the planning commission's rationale on that was that by requiring more parking spaces, that's additional cost to developer and land that is going to go to parking as opposed to housing or businesses. Um, and the planning commission wasn't willing to make that trade.
But also that would then, if, if you have more parking spaces on a site, right? Then that means that you have less building. So first of all, in a downtown area where density is appropriate, um, you then have, uh, you're requiring less density, A. And B, um, the character of downtown, right? Is, is to be walkable, is to be, um, to preserve that, that existing character that, that we dearly love. Um, and so with larger parking lots, that makes that, um, not able either. Um, and, and, and the planning commission absolutely understands, um, the, the uh, concern of the, of DDA and of the downtowners, um, in terms of the management of the parking system. Though they, the planning commission is, is confident that, um, through other mechanisms, the, uh, the DDA can manage that parking. Um, and therefore, and also that it's one parking space per unit citywide. Um, planning commission really finds that to be the most equitable, equitable way, um, ma- uh, for, for that requirement.
And I'm going to do one thing and I'll get to you, Keith. And that, that one space is a minimum, not a maximum. So if a developer thought that there was a market reason to do more than the one spot, they could always add more spaces if they chose to. Keith?
So I don't have this situation very often, Raul, um, in that I kind of, I, internally quite often I'm kind of the referee of the process or have multiple, you know, people. So you asked a question and I think it's perfectly appropriate that Jen and Chris kind of gave an answer representing the planning commission. I'm going to ask Mr. Vin Diken to come up, um, that kind of in the same way can probably at least right now kind of represent, if you would, the position of the DDA and PSD.
Yeah, thank you for that. Welcome, Mr. Vin Diken.
Oh, thank you for having me. So, yeah, so I think all of you know I sit on the DDA and the PSD boards. Uh, the PSD did have some discussion on this as well. Um, so I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is not for the entire downtown where the DDA has a concern. It is only in the north downtown area where the buildings can be nine and twelve stories now. You know, we have a downtown public parking system that is very extremely popular. Uh, it supports our downtown businesses. Uh, when this proposal came through, we sent out a survey to our downtown stakeholders and about ninety percent of them thought that one, um, parking space per unit was not sufficient and would put a significant burden on the public parking system that is paid for by those downtown folks. Um, it's been that way for a long time. It's one of the reasons our, our downtown is so popular is that you don't have to come down and feed quarters in a parking meter. You don't have to worry about it. It's a downtown parking system that's, public parking system that's paid for wholly by those downtown merchants. Uh, and they had some pretty strong feelings that they're not in support of this. So from the DDA's perspective, that's really the problem. When you've got, you know, three hundred square foot, um, units in a twelve story building, that can put a ton of parking on that public parking system. And I, I don't want to get into a, a situation where there's an argument between the, uh, the DDA and the planning commission. Um, but the, the DDA did not necessarily agree with the rationale that that put a, a larger burden on the developer. Uh, quite frankly, that's the developer's problem, uh, not the public parking system's problem. So.
I agree.
That's the perspective of the DDA.
What do you think?
That's a tough situation to be put in. So, if you have.
Any other questions on that for while we got Matt at the podium?
So would that be an example of something the pla- uh, the council could surgically change?
Yes. The answer to that is yes.
I would propose that thing. I think it's.
To not, to not increase the maximum, not, not to increase the parking. There are other reasons to do that, so.
Sure, I don't.
To keep it at one minimum. So it's the balance, all of those things?
Sure.
Sometimes you have different groups.
I agree. I mean.
And then I think, you know, s- sometimes it's punted to you and you guys get to make that decision.
I'm happy to do that. Yeah.
Raul, are you all set? Okay, good. I just want to make a hundred percent sure because I, you know.
I wanted to interrupt him again.
I took it away from you so many times tonight. Um, anyone else have comments, questions for staff?
Yes, and I forgot. Downtown parking, um, so we could also change, um, just other, uh, other things. It, we don't say, kick it back to the planning commission, work on this. We would say, this is what I want changed, uh, downtown parking. I would like to change, um, the rental process or the conversion process or whatever, and then that's the way this would work.
You're looking at me, um, that's, that's the way, yes, you have the ability to do that.
We, we can make amendments to what's here.
Sure.
And I would dare say even, I don't think I defend anyone on the planning commission. Uh, I think they would probably prefer just do that rather than like send something back to them.
Have another year. Um, and I appreciate all the work. I, you know, I've been on planning. This has just gone on a long time. But, um, I do think, and I, I did have, I appreciate your question on council member Corbin, on who created these policies. Our policy was to, um, increase density. And I, those are ki- a kind of discussions I'd like to have too, when we're all together.
All right. Other comments, other questions? Raul?
No, just a, just a comment to reiterate, uh, uh, well, a lot of what's been said about, uh, just the process. I mean, I, I know it's been a, it's been a long process to get to here. It's been an intentional process and been, uh, I've been by the work of a lot of, a lot of people. Um, I think the staff and, and certainly the, the plan commission volunteers, right, who, who live in the neighborhood, who volunteer their time to, to do this. Um, and I just think the, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of poise sometimes to, to kind of walk through a, a healthy process, you know, and the healthy process is a, is a dirty process. I mean, it's not, right, I mean, it, it gets complicated when you do it well because you want the varying opinions and, and perspectives and, and, uh, lived experiences and, um, and I think we're, we're striving to do that. lived experiences, and, um, and I think we're, we're striving to do that, and so I just want to commend everybody who's been involved. You know, now it's, now it's up to us to, to get dirty kind of in this way, but, um, no, I think it's, no, I think this is exactly what we're supposed to be doing, and so thank you for everybody who's got it to, uh, to this point, including, including the public, uh, who has been engaged.
Yeah, Keith?
I don't want to preempt anything, but procedurally, just what I would suggest is I think we took a lot of notes tonight of, okay, we'll get that piece of information, we'll distribute it to you and all those types of things, and I, I think that there might be a combination of, like, we'll make the PowerPoint presentation when we do something that'll be available for everyone, right, so you can go back and see that. Um, there might be some things that we just send out like now, kind of retroactive, if you would. There might be other things where it's like, hey, that might be better to kind of put in a future packet when we come back and talk to you, and then have the ability to show it to you and kind of talk through it, because sometimes that's the best way to do those. So we'll do our best, I think, I think we'll do pretty well, of keeping track of all the things you asked for, or want to have a discussion on. And then we'll find that next date, um, a little bit that works, like, with Chris, because he, he, we're not Chris's only client, believe it or not.
But we are his most important client.
He's, he's, I hear he says that to everyone.
And we're the only ones that, that are paying money to him. For, well, for our project, anyway, yeah.
So we'll find a time to come back for, and I committed to all of you, right? Like, the only ones that are going to make a decision to move this off study session and move it into the, your formal kind of final two-step process in your regular is you. Uh, so you control that process. So we'll send you information, we'll prepare more information for your next meeting. We'll do the work to figure out when exactly that next meeting is. Um, and then, um, we'll go, that's, that's the way we'll proceed.
Okay, great. Scott, did you have something?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, so the legal, the legal aspects of this, I, I requested. It sounds like there's a couple attorney opinions, not just the one. But when would be expected, maybe, could we do that, like, in one session, have a closed session to, to review those, or have that?
We'll do that, I'm, I'm not going to try to predict to you juggling, we'll get that to you.
Would that be something, yeah, we obviously can't provide it to us, if it's.
Yeah, we'll set up a session where we have a closed session, go through that information.
And, and maybe we can do it combined, you know, any of those, any of those legal comments that were.
I'll see, I mean, I, quite frankly, there's a way possibly that we would just do that, because that has to be in a regular meeting. Like, technically, we're, we can't have a closed session as part of a study session, for example. So we might have a closed session on these items separated from a study session that you're eventually going to have, if that makes sense. But we'll, we'll, we committed to, we'll, we'll come back and you will, we'll have that information for you in closed session.
I know most of my comments have been directed toward the staff, and I, and thank you for the response, but no, this comment is really directed toward my colleagues, is, I agree, we, we need to get the scalpel out. And if you disagree with something, you need to have it ready and prepared to have the discussion on it. And likewise, I want to have a debate with you on that as well, so that we can make sure that what, if and when we pass this, right, um, it is what, not what we perceive our community wants. And that's important, what our community wants. Uh, so I, I, I challenge each and every one of us to, to, to sharpen our pencils and start writing down our notes and making sure that we're able to, to decide what we like about this and what we don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Nikki?
Yes, I, on enforcement, um, Mark had mentioned enforcement. I, I have a, I converted my house, and now I live in it, and I rented out the other side. And I then do, how would you know if I, myself, actually lived in the other part? What if I really rented out both parts? How would, is it still on a complaint basis, or, like neighbors?
So as Chris had mentioned, um, the thought was to, to look at the, um, the homestead, uh, law, and so, so whereas someone doesn't have to physically actually be present, um, they, they do, they are required that that, that this is their own, you know, property. Um, so that's number one, but also, um, whenever any rental, uh, long-term rental um, is, is proposed or established, um, it does need to go through a rental, uh, inspection. Um, so at which point, that would be a determinant, um, because the, the housing inspectors do meet with the owner. Um, so that, and that's every three years at least. Um, and then certainly by complaint, too, if there's ever, um, anything that the community, um, doesn't think is right, um, we absolutely encourage everybody to call the, the, uh, Community Neighborhood Services and report that, and our housing inspectors do go out, uh, and look into it.
And, and now I own a home, and I establish a, either an attached or unattached ADU that I rent out. And then I move, or die, or whatever, and the house is, what, does that renter just go through the same process anybody else would? I mean, they leave too, or the new owner comes in and keeps the renter? I mean, it's like awkward. Yes, so they could still live there if the new owner said, yeah, sure, we continue to rent. It just, it's just one of those.
Happens with single-family rentals all the time. You know, I did, I did a lot of landlord tenant work as properties changed hands from one, um, one landowner to another, but they were rentals. There was an agreement about what happens with that tenant, and it depends on what the lease is, and whether it's up, and those kinds of things, yeah.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else? I just, it's, it's been said by, by folks here, I just want to reiterate, I want to, I want to thank the Planning Commission for all the work that they've done on this. This has been a long haul. Um, I know I, I've only been involved in it for the last, I don't know, eighteen months or so. Um, I also wanted to thank staff, because staff, you've been through this entirely. Chris, also thank you, and thanks to McKenna for your patience. Um, and as Raul said, definitely to the public. Um, it was, it was very heartening to hear Chris, Chris, for you to say tonight, you know, you've done this in other communities, and there, there hasn't been the engagement and the involvement with the community that there has been here, and I think that says a whole lot. Uh, both for the Planning Commission in reaching out and asking for it, and finding ways to be able to draw that in. Um, but then for the community for stepping up. Um, I've been doing, you know, I haven't been mayor for that long, but I've been in a lot of boards and commissions. And I've never seen a zoning or planning meeting where there are over a hundred people on the call who are engaged in the call and, and, uh, giving their, giving public comment. And then also the kudos to the Planning Commission for listening to that and to making the changes. And I'm glad that you guys outlined some of those significant changes that were made to the language, because Planning Commission didn't come into this thinking, this is exactly what it need, what it needs to be, and it was Planning Commission's impression of that. Planning Commission put out a proposal, asked the public, the public responded, and Planning Commission responded to that by making those changes. Is this exactly what it needs to be, as we've discussed here? Maybe not. You know, this, this body makes that ultimate decision, and it's up to us as the elected officials, for the, the people of the city of Holland, to do our very best to have, have this, as all of our ordinances, reflect what the people of this community want. And so we've got some work to do. So thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, guys. Great presentation tonight, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Council.